Thank you.
You're good.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We call a reading order, roll call.
Air West Guard.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yep.
Beckman.
Yep.
Anybody here for public forum?
Yep.
Yep.
We're gonna... You can address during the agenda for the burning if you'd like to wait.
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you.
Because you'll be allowed to speak then too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, consent agenda, any additions or corrections? Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call. Mulder.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Do we have a voting permit for Christine Elliott? Motion to approve.
I made that motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Stankin.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yep. Okay, we're gonna do the brush pile deal. Jim would like to present something before we just talk about this.
Yep. Do you mind if I said I've had some medical issues?
Do whatever you like.
Kinda getting me down sometimes here, so I don't wanna fall over here. Well, the dump's been the issue for years, and I know there's some people here against burning it. I get that. But we gotta do something about things filling up. I'm gonna come up with a plan to try and prevent this thing from catching on fire in the middle of the night. The last time we were down here, I think we dumped thirty, forty thousand gallons of water on the thing. Try and put out something that's not possible to put out. If you go down there with tobacco today and reach over the bank and pull some debris up, I guarantee you it's smoldering underneath there. I've been on this department for just short of thirty years, and two, three, four times a year we're down there trying to put the dump out. And the way it is right now, there's no access to the bottom side, the south side of that dump. There's a lane that used to exist, it's kinda still there, on the east end of the dump that goes south, and it's washed out. There's no possible way to get a truck down there. The area that you could possibly walk down is treacherous to go down, and I know Mike's been on the fire department, and Dale's on the department, and you've been on the fire department. If you wanna drag five hundred feet, an inch and a half hose full of water across the backside of that to try and get to the backside of the fire to put it out, it's a pretty tough job. Every time we go down there, we go down there at three or four o'clock in the morning because somebody sees the dump burning, and it's not usually going anywhere. I gotta get firemen over the bank and down there to attack the fire. You can't shoot water and make it come back, you know, it's a straight-off deal, so... Sending guys over the bank in the middle of the night, somebody's gonna get hurt. Broken leg or falling down that bank and having a stick go through them, but not on my call. We're not gonna have that happen. So my proposal kinda is, I guess, is we need to figure out a way to control where the debris isn't dumped. My idea is, you know, and we're gonna have to educate people, and it may cause the city guys a little bit more work, but we need to put the leaves and the grass in one designated area, okay? Because that's what smolders. The sticks burning, the sticks burning aren't smoldering. It's the leaves and the grass. So if we can get the leaves and the grass maybe to the west end or whatever the case may be, in the brush pile in an area that you can manageably burn up the sticks. Push it together, forty bolt burns once a week minimum, their brush pile. And a brush pile of just sticks is no different than the campfire down in the campground. People smell the smoke. It's burning sticks. If it's pushed together properly and let on a day that, hopefully the wind's maybe off the north or east a little bit, it'll burn up, and there won't be much left. But the grass and leaves are what smolders, and that's what everybody smells. And it doesn't smell very good.
It don't.
But if we can figure out a way to get people to keep their leaves and their grass in one location, you're gonna get some bozo that's gonna just dump it inside the gate like we already have right now. And that's when the city needs to go down there, maybe weekly with tobacco, and just push it back, and maybe people will start getting the idea of how to keep our dump... When I was a kid, Mike knows, he grew up here, we used to dump our garbage in there.
I grew up here.
Yes, you did.
And there's oil there.
Yeah, and we used to dump the garbage in there, and that was right in the gate. Now we're a hundred yards back.
And someone was there the whole time.
Right.
Every day.
But we're, right now, we're up against the tree line to the south, we're up against the tree line to the west, we can't go north. So this fall, say for instance, as dry as it is and dry as it has been, we get a big fire down there over that bank, and the wind's blowing out the north, we're gonna do one thing. We're gonna go to the south end and keep Schultz's Field from catching on fire, because we don't have no way to get down there to put it out. I mean, like I told John one day and Scott one day joking with him, I said, "I'm gonna probably need a helicopter in my budget to save the dump from burning up," but it's a non-realistic thing, but if we can, if we can push the debris back, you know, the leaves, the grass again, and manageably push a pile together, we might have to set a time, you know, we're gonna burn it once a month or twice a month. It's not gonna be every month. You know, you're not hauling leaves and grass and stuff down there now. The pile of logs down there now, I mean, I think that all came from the tile plant. You know, that stuff's not burning. I mean, you got to get that out of there somehow and over the bank, but if we can just push up the sticks, burn it every couple weeks or whatever, maybe it doesn't need to be burned every couple weeks before the pile gets too big to burn, before it's non-maniable. If you, if it, if we get it piled up good enough and light it in the morning, pretty much it's gonna be burned down by the end of the night. But, you know, going down there at three o'clock in the morning, put this thing out that's never going out when you push it over the bank is not working. So, you know, we need to, we need to fix that laneway to the south, and they need a couple other access points to get down to the south of that thing. If we ever do have to get down on the south end of the, where everybody's been pushing it over now, I have no way to get back there. We don't have forest fighting equipment, and we have fire trucks and hoses. We need access points, a couple of them. Be nice to have one at least on that east end and maybe on that west end, like a laneway or something. I'm not gonna take a $250,000 fire truck down there, but a little quick attack would be kinda handy. And I can't even get that down there now.
I will tell you, Ed, Chewie, we're just here to talk to both. Make sure you get a road down there to do that.
I know we talked about that, it never happened.
They forgot to tell the operator, obviously.
Yeah.
By the time we got him, they were gone, so...
Yeah, I mean, it's gravel already, it's, you know, it's...
We know you need a road down there.
I need some access down to that dump, or down to that south end, but if we can, you know, this thing's filling up. I mean, all that concrete going in there from the tile plant, I mean, I don't know how many years we have to continue that. I know it was an agreement with the Westline family, but that's kinda gone two or three times now. It's not owned by Westlines, it's owned by a company that has their own crushing equipment. It could be crushing their own concrete.
And they should.
And they should.
Yeah, they, I mean, they have their own equipment, and pile it up in their plant and crush it. That's what they're in the business to do. I mean, all it's doing is filling that place up, and I don't think there's anybody sitting here that it's gonna affect, but the next generation, they're gonna have to think about finding a place to get rid of their stuff, and if we keep filling it the way we're gonna do it, they're gonna have no place to go. I spent eight years on the landfill board, and we put one extra saddle in before I got off the board for our garbage to go to, was expected to get fifteen to twenty years, and it ain't been that long, and now we're hauling our garbage to Carol, so... And we better start managing it now, or we're gonna have a problem down the road, you know, for the future residents of this town, so...
Thanks, Jim.
All right. If anybody's got any questions for me, I'll be right back.
No, I'm so glad you spoke before me, actually. I married both, by the way. I haven't been around for fifteen years, but I'm back home. I'm so glad to be back home and to find beautiful city and our conservation area and our lakes and our rivers and our... Everything about this town is beautiful, and I thank you all. I just wanna reiterate some, I'm so glad you spoke before me, and I'm not against open burning. That is not why I'm here. I just want to reiterate some of the stuff that has been talked about before, and actually after him talking, all as I wanna point out is that my concerns, concerns for health issues, and you said that already that you don't like the smoldering, I don't like it either.
Correct.
I use the dump. I mean, I'm happy that it's here, and I'm glad we have it. And I do agree with you speaking about the burning of the leaves and such. That's our problem. It isn't the wood that's being burnt. It's the greenwood, and it is the leaves that are being burnt. And when you mentioned that, I was so happy because I think there should be a specific area for leaves and bagged
Grass.
Grasses and such that we take down. I use it for that also. But I don't think it should be in plastic containers. I think we should eliminate any plastic that's taken down there.
It's already that way now.
It is, good. Okay, I didn't know that.
Depends which side of the area you drive down.
And I do agree that someone should be in charge of it. That is why I'm here. I think that there should be a log book on who starts the fire and who stops it, so there, and so it's a controlled burn. I think that's not asking anything bad of anybody. I think there should be a controlled burn. As stated by you in our city site that says, "The campground should be controlled, burn it all the time. Someone should be at the fire." Only if it's left going, if that person takes it and gives it to another person to use the fire. It states in the city site. And I think that it's no different from our dump issue. I think we should have a log book that says the name of the person, the date the fire started, and then when the fire's put out, and one person should be in charge of that or more than one person as long as they put their name down. And I agree that it should be burned. It is full.
Yep.
And we need a controlled burn, like you stated. I'm not against the burn. I'm not against that. I'm against when it smolders, and not causes health issues. And we do have a lot of elderly people in our town. I'm one of them. I have, I have health issues. And it's not just that for the elderly, we do have a lot of retired people in our town. But we should be concerned for our children too with asthma and bronchitis, and we should be concerned of how it affects our youth also, not just the elderly people, because it does cause lung disease, and if you have lung issues or heart issues like I have, it doesn't, it aggravates those issues. And I think that a controlled burn is what we need. I'm not against the burn. I'm not against it at all. And what this pamphlet of stuff does, and reiterate, it does suggest that it should be a controlled burn and scheduled burns. It should be when the weather is right, when the wind is in the right direction. Burn it three times a week if you want, if the weather's good, get rid of it.
We gotta get rid of it.
Exactly. But it needs to be controlled. That's my only issue. And it does affect our environment also. You know, those molecules that are polluting is the smoldering fire. It's not the hot burning fire. It's the smolder fire that those molecules are in the air, and we bring them in, and it does affect our lungs. Everybody, not just the elderly, everybody. And that is my concern, is a health issue of it. And I, I just don't think asking for a log book is unreasonable. I think it's a simple answer to a problem that's gone on way too long, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know what anybody else has to say about it, but is there a log book? I don't know.
No, there's not.
I think that would be a simple solution, don't you?
We haven't officially lit it in two years.
Yeah.
Somebody's smoldering from the campground. We're gonna try to take care of the ashes.
And I'm not against the campground, but I think what you put on the same site is excellent, that it should be someone there at all times. And it should be put out when they're not using, and that there, someone wants it out, then that's fine. I'm all for that, and it brings people to our town. My son has a business here. I'm not gonna not want people to come to our beautiful city and enjoy just the bunch of we do.
What a lot of people don't know is that, that dump is probably smoldering underneath there right now.
Oh, I'm sure it is.
Okay. If you go down there and push leaves over the bank and start pushing that back and cover to it, nobody has to light it.
Once it gets air.
So we need to change where we're pushing it, and then the stuff we're not pushing over the bank, we need to put.
And I think you said it perfectly. I think there should be areas for brush, there should be an area for grass and whatever, but I don't think any of that combustible stuff should be near what we're gonna burn, the dry woods. I think that, and I'm so glad you spoke before me because that was a big concern. I thought there should be designated areas for everything that's taken there. And I'm sorry that the tile plant is...
Well, that's another issue.
Yeah, that's another issue, but I just, I have nothing to say other than it is not environmentally safe when it smolders. It's not good for our wildlife. It's not good for our lakes and our pits and our rivers. It's not good for our wildlife at all. It's not good for us.
Where the firemen down there putting it out, everybody.
Yeah.
Live there.
Yeah.
Live there.
Yeah.
I, I live right on the north, north end of that, and I'm telling you, it's like a...
Me?
It's like somebody's got a big ass fan, and they're just blowing it.
I lived two blocks north of it for twenty-eight years, I know, and it's, it's nobody in here lighting that fire.
Well, I, I know that things happen.
The city does not light that dump on fire.
I, I know stuff gets pushed where it shouldn't be pushed, and that's what caused it last.
I'll, I'll stand up for the city. The city does not light that dump.
So, so you guys have been here numerous times. What do you think of Jim's plan?
I like the plan, but I, but I think, this is my theory on the thing, or what I would like to see. I don't wanna see that big ass pile, excuse my pronunciation, because I don't wanna see that big pile lit at one time. I wanna see small portions burn up, that will burn up within a twenty-four hour period.
And be put out.
And be put out. And I wanna be able to go outside on my weekends where it's nice and enjoy my yard. That's all I ask for.
And believe it or not, I...
Seven weeks that dump burned last time. Seven weeks.
And I even smelled it up near the school at, when the air is heavy. So that's why I say it should be done when the weather and environment is suitable for burning.
And I, I'm all for that, but like I said, I think it should be small piles. I like Mary's idea that it should be somebody signing a paper saying, "People need to be educated on how to light a fire."
Exactly.
That's the biggest, one of the biggest problems.
And I say use our cameras that are installed out there and find these people as a way...
We've hired people, made them go back and get the bags.
Yeah.
But they didn't find them starting.
And we haven't done that yet, I...
Someone to be held accountable when they do that. Yes.
So far, we've just warned them.
It should go on our city's money.
They need fined. People need fined.
There are laws in place that says it should be controlled, and someone should be there at all times.
That's what the Iowa law is.
And that's what these papers say, and it does state the health issues and the health concerns, and that's really important, because we do have a lot of elderly people in our town.
But the Iowa law does state that something.
Sandy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So if the campground is responsible for some of this, do we need to change procedures about... Because I think alls they do on Mondays is scoop up all the ashes from the weekend, put it in the tractor, and they drive it down to the dump.
We're gonna get a trigger in this metal bottom and keep it up in the campground for a few days before they break it up.
I did not know that.
That's my deal.
Because if that's the reason the fire's starting all the time is...
I don't know.
They're supposed to dump where the cement's at, the ashes from the campground now. That's, that's our plan going into spring.
Oh, thank you.
The time it burned for seven days, it was supposedly because the campfire ashes got dumped on the leaves or pushed over on the...
And that's what I'm saying, we need to change procedures. I didn't know this other...
Yeah.
So we're looking for an old pickup box with a hitch on it.
Well, I think we all want the same thing.
Well, I think we all do, because I don't want a security, but nobody here does.
But I really do wish there would be a log book in place. I think that when you have a documented fire, like a building fire, they have to put in a sheet of paper as far as I'm, like this, to tell you when they're gonna burn, when the weather's permitted. And I think it could be something as simple as just this, in a log, in a log book, and it tells the time you start the burn, the time you put the burn out. And, and I think it should state what direction the wind is blowing at the time period, because...
But like a, like a citizen can't go down and burn their pile.
No.
You know, you're talking about the city employees and they...
Yes, yes. Anybody that is there to control the burn should be accounted, accounted for.
Somebody needs to hold accountable for when stuff gets out of hand.
We could call you and call you, but...
And when we do that, we have a controlled burn. We always talk to Jim, we talk to Dean, City Hall knows about it, and...
We probably should get more signage that says, "Do not, you know, ignite a fire," and put it over... I mean, we got two poles going up, and we can hang it right up.
The last few years, nobody's lit the dump. It's miraculously caught on fire.
Well, like Jim says, it's smoldering, and if you, if you bring air to that, it's, it's gonna ignite more.
And we think it's campground ashes that got pushed by something.
Campground ashes, I know, I know for a fact. I've kept an eye on this, trust me. You know, on Monday morning, you know, the campground ashes go down there, and now Monday night it's on fire.
Yeah.
And I go down there, and there's the ash pile. It's supposed to be by the concrete, which isn't. It's out there by the brush, and then where, where the, whatever they hold it down there with. Doesn't take an engineer to figure out that that pile used to be here, and now it's down there, and now it's on fire, so...
But I don't understand, because I, I've even taken pictures of this. I've been monitoring, I've been up here crying about this for how many years, you know, literally. But I've taken pictures of that when they say that the leaves, it burned from underneath. How does that happen in seven spots?
By the pictures that are...
I've got pictures of them, in seven spots. How does that happen?
Also, it also started igniting some live trees there, which debarked them, and they're dead now, I'm sure, because...
But how does that happen, Jimmy?
Well, those, she just brought up a good point. They're again, probably go down there minimum like two or three times a year, and if you go down there now and look at those trees that are seventy-five foot high...
Yeah, they're charred.
Well, when them little ashes come down, it starts fires all over.
Yeah, I got them on my roof, my house. I got all my canopy.
It burned the tarp on our fire truck. We had to put it out with a...
It burned ours hard, on my gazebo. It burned my car.
That's how it starts in multiple places.
So we really should be concerned about that as a safety factor, because it could start some house on fire.
The fire was not at hand at that point in time, Jimmy. It was just started smoldering, and that's when I went down and took a picture, and all of a sudden it smoldered in seven spots, and I don't understand how that happened.
If you, like I said, if you went down there and start moving, moving the rain down there...
Miraculously at the same time.
That's all smoldering on there. I guarantee you, if you go down there and put air to that thing, if you go down there and start pushing that back and start getting air to that, it's gonna start in multiple places, so they don't just push it back on the spot.
Well, I think we're all here for the same reason and same, same concern.
Well, the city's trying to do what's right for the community.
Exactly.
And I think we're on a, I don't know, they could use my plan or their own plan or whatever they wanna do, but I think everybody understands here that they're trying to fix the problem.
I can understand that with the burn that they put around there, which was smart.
Yes.
But after I looked at that, it's very smart.
I'm really glad you mentioned that separate areas, because I was gonna bring that up in my note, so that I have here, that it needs to be separate areas and designated areas for everything, I think. And then we can all be happy. I mean, we live in the same town. We're like family in this small town, I think. That's my opinion. And we can agree upon the fact that these things need done, and they need done sooner than later. And I think a log book would be a wonderful tool in our, for us to use as a community. And I don't think that's a difficult thing to do, instead of a log book and, and someone sign in and sign out when the fire's put out, so they can say, "Well, it was out when I was there." So if a fire starts later, they're not accountable for that. I don't think it's that hard.
Well, I would think the council would wanna have some sort of a motion that would put Jim and Dean and Scott together, would put together a plan, and...
And come back later and talk about it again?
Right.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
But I'd really like to see the piles not so big that they're burning where it can't burn out in twenty-four hours.
And the logs that got taken, the trees got the Hancock out, but now we take them, if they're gonna be a whole bunch coming, we take them to that shriger for them south of town.
Yeah.
We'll take them.
Somebody's out there tonight moving the logs.
Well, it sounds like you've put some places, some things in place already, so...
Was the other taking some out then tonight?
Yeah, big logs. Big logs. Got a gravel thing on the block there.
I'll make a motion. I think we were just talking about that Sandy should be included on that committee. Go do some care taking actions.
I think, I think it comes down to education, to the employees down there.
Sandy, Dean, and Jimmy and Scott. Dean and Walman.
Second.
Second to that.
Sandy.
Roll call.
Excuse me, before vote, can I, can I ask me on that team? Can a citizen be on it?
Why not? I don't know why not.
Okay, thank you.
You have to give Scott your phone number.
Oh, I'll give you my phone number. Thank you, everyone, for listening. I appreciate it. And there's a lot of good information in reading in there. I highlighted what needs to be read, and there was a part that regarding COVID, and right now we know COVID is a thing that we need to discuss and how it affects them, because the particles that we inhale goes into our bloodstream and stops the oxygenated blood. And with COVID already being that way, that it affects your bloodstream and your oxygen in your blood, it's a very important part to read. Thank you.
Beth, roll call.
All right. Wolman.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance. If anybody wants to stay, that's fine. Ordinance first.
Yep.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. I'm glad we got...
Welcome back.
You wanna give me your phone number for...
Yes, I do. On my cell, six, 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 nine, one, one. Thank you, Scott.
Very good. You bet. Thanks.
You're available most times?
All the time.
All the time.
I'm retired.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, ordinance five eighteen is, we're gonna fix some of these ordinances. Is that speed for any of the speed limits?
Yeah, just, there, we have a, an ordinance, a speed ordinance that references speed on Highway seventy-one, and I'll just clarify that changes it to Highway one seventy-five, like it's supposed to.
Motion to approve five eighteen.
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call. Roll call.
Mulder.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yep.
Beckman.
Yep.
Frank.
Yes.
Move on, motion to waive the second and third readings. So move. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Wolman.
Yep.
Mulder.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Need one more motion on five eighteen to finally approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mulder.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance five nineteen is the parking on the campground.
Yeah, this is the one where it refers to parking, it's a built-in parking area, and that parking is not allowed there between ten-thirty PM and forty AM. Now, that, I'm sure, was, was implemented when the office wasn't down there. There wasn't any parking at the beach at the time. Now people park there all the time. So this would just propose to rescind that ordinance.
That motion approved five nineteen.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Frank.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yep.
Beckman.
Yes.
Give me a motion to waive second and third readings.
I'll make that motion.
Second, Mulder.
Second.
Roll call.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yep.
Stankin.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Okay, we need a motion to finally approve, five nineteen. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mulder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yep.
Stankin.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance five twenty, that's about our dock permits.
Yes, so...
We need to fill in the blanks, five twenty.
The... So in two thousand nine, the council passed a motion to change dock permits. Okay, they passed a motion to do that. They did not pass a, an ordinance to make that change. So the ordinance currently says the fee is a hundred dollars, and if the abutting property owner maintains that adjacent property, that seventy-five, seventy-five dollars is waived, so the fee is twenty-five dollars, and the hoist permit then is thirty dollars. That's what the, the code reads right now. That motion in two thousand nine made it such that the fees were the same as what the DNR fees were, and that's two hundred dollars for a dock permit and fifty dollars for each hoist.
I don't see any reason to raise them. I think we ought to have five twenty with the two hundred dollars and a fifty dollar lift hoist.
Are we going to reimburse the property owner and waive the fee for them maintaining it? Because the DNR maintains the ground with their docks.
I think, I think we'll just let them maintain it themselves. They don't, it's no big deal with us, is it?
I don't know, is it?
I don't know. You're there. I'm not gonna leave you mess.
You're, you're gonna be the one liable for it. And you know the, you know the DNR documents, the only one they're charging for is on North State Road, right?
I have no idea.
I do. So I've done my homework.
I have no doubt that... I have no doubt that.
So the only place they charge for dock permits is along Crescent Park Drive. That's charged by the city and North State Road.
So they don't charge at Dennis Beach anywhere?
Uh, no.
We get charged. We have a charge and a low less. Yep, we're two fifty.
Two fifty?
So. Was yours about the DNR?
Yep. We are DNR.
They told me different today.
Yeah, we pay.
Jimmy, Lakewood. We pay.
Ours is different.
Oh, yeah.
We all look from. We have different charges.
And we do have to take care of the land in front of our, we have to mow it, we have to maintain it and everything. We have to maintain everything there. They don't maintain anything. And we are not allowed to move anything.
We should be consistent and stay with what they got there. Council wanna leave the same two hundred and fifty or what do you wanna do? Need a motion on five twenty. I'll make that motion. Second.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Just clarify then, two hundred dollars for a dock permit and fifty dollars for each hoist.
Yes.
And then the language about maintaining the land then is just removed?
Yep.
All right, so who was, who was motioning second?
Who maintains the land?
The neighboring, the neighboring property owners maintain the land.
Okay.
They're, they maintain the land. You know, and out there at the Crescent Park Drive, this is where we have that dock permit agreement with the DNR. That expires at the end of this calendar year.
Where's that go up to Rick Renzi's property?
Yep. He's the last, he's the last one. That's where it splits off between Crescent Park and Dennis and Beach.
And you guys pay yours to the state?
To the DNR, yep. And we maintain that ground. They don't do, if I wanna trim those trees, I have to get their permission, but I have to pay for it. Because they will not pay for it. They won't pay for anything.
I'm having a motion second. One motion and tell me second. Roll call.
Okay, Stankin.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Frank.
No.
Beckman.
No.
Wolman.
Yep.
Which is the passes? Motion to waive the second and third readings, five twenty.
It'll require four votes to waive.
No. You guys gonna maintain your votes or those are waived?
I'm gonna maintain mine. You know much money I've spent down there?
We appreciate that.
I'm sure you do.
Okay, we got down to the tentative agreement with local union. We motion approve agreement. Summer. Second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mulder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yep.
Stankin.
Yes.
Summer staffing. You got a plan? Gonna cost more money? Are we gonna, are you skipping over ten?
Um, when we start at the trees, will we?
Summer staffing. We'll take you.
Me?
Yep.
So all I really have to say is that, and I know we raised it from nine dollars to eleven dollars. It's what we're gonna get is eleven dollar an hour kind of people to work down there. I just hope you consider a little bit more. I don't know who's coming back this year. I'm very worried that if Jack's health isn't good and he's not coming back, I don't know who we're gonna find to do twenty-eight toilets and urinals in fourteen sinks like he did and take care of it. We have no mold in our bathrooms. It's a long process and it takes, it's a thirty-hour job that Jack did a week. And I just don't know who's gonna do it for eleven bucks. The bump outs, I know that got brought up at the last meeting. My only thing to say about those bump outs is we're putting the money in to fix the bump outs and make them look good. We had lots of compliments last year, the plan that we have in, that we're working on right now. But we didn't just stop at the bump outs. Myself and then a couple volunteers from town, we took leak lowers and we blew the streets off and we scooped it up and took it out to the dump. And we had great compliments about how good Main Street looked last year. Because we did do the exercise. I hope you consider the bump out. I don't know if you're gonna spend how much for the year, but it's gonna be busy in the spring. And then it's not gonna be an every day, I don't think, thing. I mean, they're gonna have to check for the weeds. I'm more than happy to come up and help. And then it's keeping the streets clean. I mean, we picked up so much garbage out of the bump outs all the days that we were there planting and taking care of it. The dogs pooped in my boxes. There's cigarette butts everywhere and then just trash. So that's my little thing about the bump outs.
I gotta comment about the bump outs. You have a person watering them bump outs and he sits in the pickup while he's watering. Couldn't he be working on it?
Who's, who's the waterer?
Well, wasn't it a water tank in the back of a pickup? It had been in previous years.
Not on my time it hasn't been. You know how we water, Mike? With a golf cart and five gallon pails. That's what we have as a vehicle to drive around. And my watering starts down at the community, the pharmacy down there. There's one down there. Goes all the way to Third Street and we have to stop somewhere and find water and we're soaking wet.
With your, I know years ago, there used to be a.
There's still a state that can go in.
Yeah, they would sit there and do the trees when they first got going, south of bike arch, they would sit there and water.
They used to water in all the flowers around here.
Yep.
They could be doing double duty instead of sitting in the pickup is what I'm getting at.
I don't know about how that worked. I can tell you that my mini golf person usually took off as soon as the golf cart was available because Jack always took it. And then once we had that at ten o'clock, they would fill up the five gallon pails. They'd sometimes even stop at my house in Phillip. Or they'd stop off at the park in Phillip or wherever we could get water. It was by the, by golf cart. And it stinks. It's not a fun job because you're absolutely drenched when you're done.
But we do have the equipment, is what I'm saying, to use, put it in the back of a pickup.
I brought it up to Eric and I think Scott that this next season going forward, we're gonna need a lot of water for everything that we're doing with the bump outs. But I hope I get my turn at that truck with the watering tank on it. So that we can get up there and water. It's a much faster process and then they can be doing something else. Yeah, but I don't think the water guy is gonna be the one to sit there and pull weeds and, I mean, once you're watering, you're not gonna stop watering. I'm looking for somebody to, if we need a water, to water, to pull weeds and the garbage that's in them.
I see Ruth Green is that still, I thought she moved on for one year.
I have no idea what your agreement was with her. That was not, I was no part of any of that.
So we.
Can I make a comment about Ruth though, really quick, please?
Yes.
So my first year last year, I spent the majority of my time out hands-on, outside of the office. It's a big deal. This whole reservation system that we're using, it's not a simple process. And all the bookwork that goes with it and then answering the phones and answering all the emails. I mean, I'm still doing it now. The emails that come in from the campers is just crazy. I, I need her. I need her. I don't even, I don't know what you guys wanna do to her, but I would love to at least have her for half the day. That way in the mornings I can get out there and get my stuff done and help with the crew. And then I just need her to teach me a little bit more about this whole reservation thing. And the start of the summer, it's not a simple process. Because we got your annual campers that are there all summer. They start calling in on the fifteenth of April. There's a whole process.
She's about the only one who knows how to run it, besides you?
She's the one that's done it for twenty-some years.
As you look at staff, and any returning staff, you have Sandy. And, and, and then, and that likely might be the only amount of returning staff with the campground.
Well, I agree that's probably gonna be the only returning staff, but we're, why can't she be the assistant manager? If Ruth wants to come back. I don't know if Ruth does. Again, we have an advertisement for that stuff, but.
No, I would tell you, folks, that I've talked with Ruth and Ruth was, was interested in coming back. If, assuming everything continues as well as it has been for her and for Charlie. Of course, there's some extenuating circumstances there too about how Charlie's doing.
Because the way this looks right now, we're adding another parks worker, part-time. We're adding a bio, a bump out helper. And then we're keeping all the staff that we had at the campground last year. Correct?
Yeah, that's true.
We were just short last year, that's all I can say. There just wasn't enough people to get everything done.
And it takes people to make that thing work down there.
And let me comment too on, I think, is that what you're talking about Dale, the new seven and a half month worker, number three?
Yep.
I think what our, our goal is, is he's going to be the person that will eventually take over like what Eric is doing. Eric and Mark, they've very much, for sure Eric, Eric only wants to work half-days.
Yeah, so I guess I'm looking at this and if Eric wants to cut back.
Then it might not be that number.
Or should we be looking for a lead parks guy with Eric? Working with the lead parks guy?
That's what we're doing.
Well, that's not the way it's.
Not, maybe not, you know, as far as titles might go, Dale, you know, if Eric is proposed to be the lead guy. But yeah, we'd look for a third guy.
If the third guy wouldn't know what to do.
Right.
Looking, looking forward the next two or three years after that to take over and really be knowledgeable about what's going on. You just said you think about Eric and Mark. I think they've used fifteen thousand for their, for their wages for the past couple of years. And they do wanna cut back. They do want to cut back. What that number would exactly be, I don't.
They don't wanna weed the bio retention cells for long.
I can't imagine who's gonna fight for that job.
Not for fourteen.
That's eleven dollars.
Yeah, not for eleven.
Our mayor wants to do that.
I'm already spokey.
And, and I don't, I don't know that I can see Ruth putting in the, what we would need as an assistant manager. That everything that goes with that job. She, she's very good at the ordering the office to team for the customers, this whole reservation system that I'm still trying to learn. And I know she doesn't wanna work at nighttime at all.
So what you're saying is if we have a individual coming in, like Ruth coming in, what time would she work for bait to noon? Is that what's.
Ruth, she usually goes in about seven, like what I would love out of her at minimum is I would love to see her do seven thirty till eleven thirty. So that gives me time to go out and do all the other stuff that I do and then get back in there. But I don't know what you guys have for an agreement with her and what, like if she was, she is on the forty hour, twenty hour. I was not here for any of that planning.
And I would tell you, we didn't, we didn't have any agreement about, you know, we had an agreement, she was gonna be what we called our consultant last year.
If she'll stay, we take.
Yeah, clearly it's a, yeah.
But what you're saying is that you, you don't see her as being an assistant manager. So then we would have to find someone to be an assistant manager and we would have to get a job description of what that entails.
Right. It's kinda like what Hannah did last year. And Hannah was very, very good at her job, but unfortunately she's also hired for the promotions part. So on the big weekends when I really needed her or like band or when the Stone Care concerts, I didn't get her. So I went in in the morning and stayed till night to cover her. I don't know if Scott can pull up her, the amount of hours that she actually even worked.
Yep, not very much.
It wasn't very much.
It just didn't, didn't work out.
We had the, we had the position.
For the, just that she also is, of course, working with Milton's on the, and had lots of hour demands there. So she was our, our assistant manager and with the goal of that assistant manager position being that we staff virtually all of the hours, either with a manager or an assistant manager.
We're not gonna know until we advertise.
What are the hours that somebody's down there all the time?
Um, so like I said, Ruth was usually there by seven thirty. And then Mondays and Tuesdays, we close at four. Wednesdays, we close the office at seven. Thursday is at eight or nine, I don't remember. And then Friday and Saturday, we're down there till ten. And on Sundays, six o'clock.
You said Thursday's at eight?
I will have to text. I can't remember if it's eight or nine. And it depends on the week. If it's a regular week, they're out of there at eight oh one. If it's a holiday week, that Thursday night, they're usually there till nine or ten, because the people start coming in on Thursday. So holiday weeks, it is a few more hours.
So the goal is to have somebody in that shed at all times during them hours, correct?
Right. And Dale, you usually have to have at least two people because if something happens outside and you gotta go, somebody still has to be inside.
Somebody's gotta sell the snacks and.
Somebody's, yeah, you gotta have somebody concessions. And some of the concessions help we hired, we, they weren't allowed to be in the reservations part. They didn't get trained on that. There, we had strict rules about the email because in the beginning they kind of would think around their computer and answer emails. And we didn't know if they got answered correctly or not and we had problems, so we had to get rid of that.
So I'm just gonna ask a goofy question. Instead of being called a mini golf helper, could it be another attendant? Or is that mini golf helper only for the mini golf and can't be the other attendant?
I would love it if all's we had is one person who focused on mini golf. And again, they're not there all day. In the spring, they're gonna put more hours in than the rest of the time because there's planting and all that. Then what that mini golfer would do is come in every morning, every morning, blow the mini golf off. There's always, always sticks to pick up every single day. And then you got the saplings to trim and weeds to pull. And then you gotta water that whole thing.
I think it's.
But it's workable. Like I'm open to, right now, that's what we did. They would go outside and do that and then they would come in a little bit and do the inside. But apparently before me, the mini, the campground attendants didn't have to do mini golf because we'd had some hires back from the years before. And when they found out they had to go out and do mini golf, it was a battle.
And some of the new equipment's gonna help with that, right?
Yes, if we can get, if we're getting the.
Blowers.
Sprayers, the blowers, that's, we're gonna cut down on a lot of time. And if I can get my hands on that truck for the watering.
So if we just call everybody campground attendants, whether they do mini golf or not, and you just tell that person that you're doing mini golf today or whatever. Then when, then when somebody's. If you just hire for, somebody for a mini golf helper, and they might get their feelings hurt because they have to go clean toilets or something because you can't.
That's what happened. That's why interviews will be different this year. I was green, had no idea last year. I will guarantee you the job description is going to be laid out before we hire them so they know.
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah. You know, and it depends on who the people, who might not need that third campground attendant. If we had the right crew.
But aren't you asking, aren't you just saying the same, did I just hear what, I thought you were saying to have a, that campground attendant would be the mini golf helper might have to do the campground stuff, right?
Right.
That's what I thought I heard you say, yeah. Oops. No, my battery just died.
I think the way it's been for years is like, I'll use Lauren. She was really good. For years, Lauren was the mini golf girl. She, Lauren.
Letter.
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 She came down, that was her job. And then last year, she trained Olivia. And then the, the kinda census was like.
Did she do bump outs?
Olivia?
No, Lauren.
I don't know before.
My daughter was there before her and I know she did bump outs. As a mini golf. With us going through this budget stuff, maybe we could get a summary of what everything is required in the whole parks thing. Just, you know, so we can understand what's all going on, so it helps us budget. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
So we know what the really requirements are?
We do, we have job descriptions here all.
We do, but she just sat down talking about changing them, so.
Well, and, and some of these attendants that you have, let's say, can you not cross-train them on, and then rotate what they're doing? You know, one day it might be the mini golf, one day it might be bump outs, one day it might be something else, so.
Yeah, I did that last year and I didn't know. Well, yeah, it's just in the, when we hired them, they're like, well, no one said I had to be out watering flowers. Oh, it will be said this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
One of the things we're doing too, we're raising our rates a couple bucks, right? So I think, you know, we could kinda take a look at putting a number together for what the wages could be for to raise them up a little bit and see where we're at, I mean.
A little bit more where we're at.
See how many there is and then kind of determine how. But I think once we have an idea of what they, what the requirements are, that's gonna help us know what we. Because as you, I'm sitting here looking at this, last year, from last year to this year, we're adding one, two. And then we had one job that wasn't even filled last year that's still in here, so.
Well, we do have a total, don't we, a hundred and four thousand?
Hundred four, I see.
Hundred thirty-two. Find it.
You need to be in the parks, parks section, next section up.
Five eight twenty.
Yeah, but it's just in the middle, the middle, the middle section, not the.
Oh. Yeah.
Like one person doing the office, but that other person has to be available to the campers because they're just at you all the time. Something's going on out there that they need attention for. So it can't be ran with just one person, because then we'd have to lock the door to leave. And so then if that person's out helping campers and you got one concession, sometimes we run three people a shift on some of it. And the bio cell things, I don't even know how many bio cells or anything we have, I didn't even know about this until we got into it in March, or area started. The day you came back from, you know, thistles at one of the bio cells.
We have two there.
This land. The land, the land there.
Yep.
One at the museum. There's, that's horseshoe.
Horseshoe has a little one that nobody knew about, so they backed it all off once.
Maybe the neighbors are gonna wanna do that.
With the, uh.
Sort of like a DAPA highway?
Yeah.
Let's ask Joyce. I was going farther with everybody, we could ask Dale. Levers. So are, are we gonna have her put together like a?
I'm gonna, I will.
A portfolio for us, does that make sense?
We'll get, we'll have a better idea.
But you would want to be able to get to is just to, uh.
The budget part.
Um, even getting applications out there, we, we would, we would advertise.
I, I don't think there's any reason to hold off on putting applications out there, putting advertising out for applications. Because the sooner you get there, the sooner we get some of these people maybe locked in for, before they go somewhere else.
I'm looking at, let's say, it's in the council packet then, assistant campground manager, it's in mental, three campground attendants. Or we just say we're advertising for, for a campground attendance.
I don't think you have to say, I don't think you have to list enough of them.
No, you're. You know, this would say a bump, bump out, uh, maintenance person, but you know, we can, what we do, I would tell you with min, with the mini golf helper is that it's been a great position for a, a youngster to fill. And that the position can be filled by a fourteen year old and, boy, uh, we've had fourteen year olds start there.
And I make the difference.
A fourteen year old don't get pulling weeds and cutting saplings and picking up sticks and they, you know what they get, they get, their, their focus is they blow it off. And then when he starts, well, you gotta do these weeds and stuff too, then they're like, oh, oh my gosh, yeah, they gotta, I think it'd be a great person for somebody who loves to garden.
What, I don't know why we can't advertise for assistant campground manager, campground attendants. And, um, leave it at that and then see where it goes from there and use your, when they, the applications come in, we can. So somebody might, like she's saying, it might be a retired person that wants to go clean and, and do that stuff where they only wanna work two hours a week, or it might be somebody else that wants six hours a week or eight, or six hours a day or something like that that we can utilize doing other things. Quite, quite limited.
So you'll let us know how many hours are expected of the campground attendants and sort of.
I have all my challenges, who worked with?
So would we advertise for a, uh, another seven and a half month worker? Just to differentiate between what we've called a seven and a half month worker and then the two one or two seasonal parks worker, those, those would be the summer helpers. And the other, the other guys work seven and a half months. Um, the other thing that we haven't talked about is utility floaters. I'd like to advertise for utility floaters and we'll see how many we can got, last, uh, last year we had one. We have had as many as three, but it has to do with really how many good candidates we get.
They have to be eighteen?
That need to be eighteen. Yep.
In my opinion, it's advertise and see what you get and then you pick from there.
Yep.
It'd be a good problem to have if you get to go through.
So I agree, how do you do that, uh? What, uh, wage is negotiable or is that what we wanna say or are we gonna go out and?
You know, when people ask about, when people ask about wages, I'd talk wages like are listed here, so if it's a campground attendant right now, it's eleven dollars unless you look at any changes. And they do, of course, ask about wages.
Yeah, so like a fourteen year old in my head is the eleven dollar an hour person, the hmm, I don't know how to say this, but somebody who's gonna go out and do the work and I mean, like the campground attendant, like, uh, who's making the, um, selling the cans of pop and doing that. That is an eleven dollar, but it's the people outside doing the grunt work, the ones cleaning the toilets and hauling brush to the brush pile that they picked up.
Physical labor.
The physical labor part of it. You can't have a, be the same as eleven years, it's gonna be sixteen.
No, it's a year.
Or fourteen and fourteen, for eleven bucks.
I agree, they can't.
Run a lawnmower, like a sixty, they cannot run chainsaw, but they run a lawnmower.
They can run a lawnmower, but they can't run chainsaw, think so they can grab the pickup off to get rid of the brush or the ashes or whatnot.
In the right spot, for a sixteen year old.
In the right spot, yeah.
We've made adjustments to, if we have the right person, we've gotten, been able to pay him what we had to to get him, so. I don't think that's a huge problem. Because we're not gonna get anybody for eleven bucks that you want.
Right. So like the attendant part, like I picture that as the concessions girl. You know, and then you've got the office person and they're the ones that are complaining with all the complaints and the phone calls and the which is not as fun of a job as making snow cones.
We'll get all the stuffing.
I'm still a little unsure about whether you wanna work on anything on wages or we're just gonna proceed with advertisements and, and, and we can address that stuff later.
Find out who we're gonna get.
You can state that in, you know, depending on qualifications.
Right, because if you leave it, advertise it as eleven, it, it will deter people from.
Yeah, they, they generally don't advertise with the wages, just that we're accepting, uh, applications for, for these positions. But of course, they usually do.
They ask.
Sure.
They should get one to get here. Okay.
Okay, proceed with that, with advertising.
Okay, we're gonna consider the resignation of our police chief, directly of course.
So if we say no, does he have to stay?
No. No, uh. I submitted my letter this morning to Scott, I think you all have a copy, I just wanna say thank you. Now just me and my family, like you, it's treating my family and I. Fantastic lady and just wanna say thank you for the opportunity. And, um, I appreciate everything you guys have done for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Brandon, I would like to tell you something that I heard this weekend. From somebody at the city at Zachary Courthouse. Kudos to you for following up with the excellent paperwork. So, it hasn't been done in the past and they made sure that I was aware that you were gonna agree though.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for your service.
And I know I've been here very shortly, a lot shorter than I, you guys and I anticipated. Anytime you go someplace and you head up a department, you hope that, do you leave it better than when it, uh, when you arrived and, uh, I'm extremely proud of the officers and I think, um, everybody's moving in a great direction.
Do you, do you have a recommendation for a in, intern?
Intern?
Yeah, we're gonna do that after you have a motion to accept his resignation.
What if we don't accept it?
I don't think we got a whole lot of chance. Is there a motion to accept resignation of the police chief?
Good luck to him, Dennis, and also second.
Second?
I'll second.
We'll call him.
Beckman.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
I've talked to Brandon and Scott and I've also talked to Dan, I would propose that, that we hire Dan as the interim police chief at twenty-five dollars an hour. I would entertain that motion if the council approves. So move. Second?
I'll second it.
We'll call him.
Boltman.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Now we had to decide how to advertise.
Hey, I do wanna point a clarification, I guess, when you said twenty-five dollars an hour. So I talked with Dan about whether he'd be interested in, in being interim, he'd be real interested in being in interim and is there any you know, what, what his thoughts were about any financial arrangements and he didn't necessarily have any, any demands or, or anything like this. But his suggestion was that, uh, generally that Lakeview pays under market for certified part-time guys. And that we generally pay us right around twenty bucks, Dan gets twenty-one eighty-six right now. And, and twenty-five was more the going rate, so I guess to clarify, is, is this Dan's Dan's new wage while he's serving as interim or is this Dan's new wage?
When he's interim.
When he's interim?
That seems fair.
Yep, thank you.
How would the council like to advertise?
Well, we know what's inward, the board's papers, it works.
I mean, what works good?
I like the idea of Indeed, you know, it's a.
The internet.
Indeed, you ever used Indeed?
We have, you know, and Indeed is a great place to look for candidates for anything.
Or the police.
That working? Yeah, it's not working, um, but I really don't think you guys are gonna, you need to get too crazy when it comes to advertisement. I think you guys are gonna have plenty of candidates, um, around the area.
There's some local individuals interested.
So I think if, if we just advertise in the resort and maybe.
Tri-County?
Tri-County and see what happens and maybe on our Facebook page.
I still suggest we put it on Indeed.
Yeah, I guess I would.
Off the other side, so we're posting, Indeed is a great resource.
When we, uh, we used Indeed when we hired our last one and, and got lots of responses off of Indeed. That online stuff is not all that expensive. And, and you certainly get your, get the word out there to the world. So, yeah, resort, Tri-County special, Zach Sun, we would like to have one online presence, I think. What, uh, I guess how we'd like to advertise, just seen page ten was the, was the advertisement that we used last time. And then we just had that the position was open until filled. And we've, that's worked out well, I guess what, what I would suggest to you is to say that the position's open until filled with first review of applications on March first. It still gives about, by the time it publishes in the paper, publishes here on the sixteenth. So, you know, it, it only gets a couple weeks after the end of the public.
Once we get those applications is where we, we need two councilmen to serve on the board to look at those applications.
Yeah, you guys can, of course, decide how you, how you'd like to.
Bring it to the council, we did that last.
Yeah, I think Whitey and I did that last.
They're all the worst, why don't you guys wanna try it, that's it.
You wanna motion to advertise in those places?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to advertise in the resort, Zach Sun, Tri-County and Indeed.
Second. We'll call him.
Okay, Moller.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yep.
Stankin.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
That's okay then to have first review on March first?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Now with that, then that is, well, that's the date when, when Brandon would, would start down and, and Dennison too, so. His last day working here is probably gonna be the twenty-fifth, that Friday.
Wanna put your name in in case you change your mind?
Well, he can get hired.
Thanks for everything you've done for us.
I appreciate it, yes.
And you did leave the department very, very.
Okay, resolution twenty-two oh eight, we need to appoint Jeff as a member and Dean as a backup.
Yeah, just that, uh, Jeff has been our, our, uh, appointed, appointed member to the NMPP Members Council, but they want everything done by a formal resolution, so if we approve that by.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second it, we'll call him.
Moller.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Beckman. Frank.
Yes.
Jared, I have no idea why we made you wait through all of this. For the least.
I'm here.
I apologize.
No problem. Scott, I just realized that I had this handy dandy, uh.
Oh, you got the handy, the clickerizer?
Yeah, clickerizer deals, so we'll see, I think it may need to, may need to download your machine real briefly, but. Hope that in there and then I should, should come up saying it's downloading, spirits of installing, but. Real brief here.
Hell, yes, I'm gonna cut it out.
Is it, is it updated?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got the old one. It's a classic, right?
No. It's outdated.
I know. Already out of date. All right, thanks guys, um, I'm Jared Luzzi with DGR Engineering. We're a design electric civil wastewater firm, um, consultant firm out of Rockland, Iowa, northwest corner of the state there, in Lion County. Was, uh, tasked by Scott here to, I think. There we go, okay, this might be awkward holding my hand like this, but we'll give it a shot. Anyway, Scott contacted us. Let us know that Lakeview's having quite a bit of growth, quite a bit of activity, uh, econo, economics wise. Anywhere, anyways, it's been a while since we did our last electric system study update, I believe nineteen ninety-three is the last time a comprehensive look at your guys' electric system was taken and a report and recommendations were made at that time, so, anyway, um, I'll get going here, I'll try to keep it concise and to the point here, uh, but yeah, I appreciate you guys letting me come and talk about the electric system here. So, just, just, you're gonna see some reoccurring, uh, terminology here, I just wanted to touch on it briefly here, um. So basically, the electric power delivered by the city of Lakeview is, uh, based on K, so energy demand are the two main units of measurement for load that we're looking at for this system study. So energy is the KWH and demand is the KW or kilowatts. And the, the key thing is that the demand is what drives the capital infrastructure improvements, capital improvement projects, so that the demand sets your guys' system capacity and that's what we have to keep an eye on when we look at peak and, uh, the low growth levels that we're seeing here, uh, and both historical and projected, so just real, really briefly wanted to touch on that. Also voltage levels, so you guys have a transmission distribution and then the service voltages, so the transmission comes into the substation just on the north side of town there at sixty-nine KV, um, that substation steps it down to twelve point four seven KV which then the distribution system has various feeder network, uh, and, and equipment that transmits it to the houses, to the consumers at usually, you know, four eighty to a hundred and twenty volts, so that's just kind of a, a quick rundown there on just some of the terminology you'll see and especially if you read through the report. So just a little history, um, like I mentioned, we last looked at the system in a comprehensive fashion in nineteen ninety-three. A lot of stuff has changed since then, quite a bit. one was you guys had like an old two-point-four KV system. I can't recall if that was a delta configured system or not, but anyway, you guys converted to the modern higher voltage level, which increases the efficiency of power delivery across your system since nineteen ninety-three. And then also you guys, uh, implemented an underground, uh, in-town, uh, construction method. So all of your, your, most of your, uh, distribution network is underground in the city limits. You do have some, uh, rural, uh, lines that are overhead yet, but in-town, it's your guys' practice to install underground pad mount equipment, uh, or underground cable for, for your, your primary system here. So, you know, there's been a, a recent uptick in the, there's been kind of steady, you know, lake recreation mode and everything, but, uh, what, what really got the city engaged with us here in this recently is the, uh, some exciting industrial and commercial developments that, uh, have, are continuing to expand in, in the city's service area. Just real briefly here, your existing system is, uh, like I mentioned, you have a sixty-nine KV, you're loop-fed by Mid-American Energy, MEC. They have a north line that comes to the north side account and then also, uh, that, which can, can feed the substation from the north, uh, as needed. I believe your guys' normal feed is actually from the, the west, southwest. Correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, the, MEC also has a loop. They have a loop, you can be fed from both sides depending on if there's any adverse weather conditions or emergency events like that. So there's some redundancy there. Um, substation, you have one substation, it transforms voltage from sixty-nine KV, uh, from MEC to twelve-point-four-seven KV. There are two transformers today. Um, it's, they have base ratings of five MVA and top-end ratings of seven MVA. So basically, um, there are some cooling fans on the transformers that, uh, turn on when you need to reach that upper, uh, rating of seven MVA. And so, but the base rating is five MVA for those units. Then you have, basically, your substation, it ha- is, is in really good condition. I, I guess most of it is in pretty good condition, um, but it was all built in the seventies. And so as we go here, you know, we're coming up on forty-five years since that substation was built and it's mostly all original equipment. Um, the twelve-point-four-seven KV, uh, switchgear shelter aisle is that gray building inside the substation fence and that houses, uh, oxygen, uh, does it have, so five, uh, air breakers that basically are the, uh, it's the switchgear that feeds the feeders that feed the town, to put it plainly in the gears. And then your distribution system, as I mentioned, is twelve-point-four-seven. Um, in-town is underground, outside is rural, uh, the rural system is overhead, I should say. Um, that's the general configuration there of the existing system. Um, looking a little bit here at load growth, so over the last ten years, your guys' peak or, or rough peak has been in the, the five-and-a-half KW range as of twenty-twenty. You'll see there is a little spike there in, uh, twenty-twelve, and that was rag-bri that summer. Scott reminded us, reminded me that that was going on at the time, it was super hot and there was a whole bunch of people in town and, and people stayed here overnight for that, so, which is kind of fun to look back on. Um, so what we're, what we looked at here is, uh, ba- you know, based on your guys' is, you know, fairly modest increases up to date, uh, what we needed to look at was the amount of immediate load that we're expecting from Evapco and the expansion there for their facility. They're, they're installing a new facility and, uh, we had some detailed discussions about the type of load, uh, capacity they'd be requiring there and the demand, um, that they would require. And basically, you're gonna be adding what is, what we believe to be about one-point-seven KW in the next couple of years, so. Up in, in as much as about, well, you can see there, that map doesn't really help us much right now, but, um, it's all part of the study and the council will have a copy of that study, uh, forthcoming here after we have this meeting. But, um, we basically applied about five-hundred KW to the overall system in general, just general load growth as we looked at the next ten years. Uh, but the key, the key item is, uh, yeah, Evapco in the top right, where you have a little bubble up there, if you guys, probably hard to see, it's hard for me to see. Um, and then a couple other areas where we, we, what we do is we model the system with our software. We put point loads, uh, around the system to model peak scenarios and see what the, see what the voltage drop and what the capacity looks like, uh, at various equipment on the system. So the underground cable and the, uh, you know, the, the elbows, two-hundred amp rated elbows, just the various electrical distribution equipment around the, the city there. So what all that equates to, basically with Evapco, Jacobs and Seeds had, had a little bit of load growth there and, uh, the school, some upsizing of some, some transformers there. And then there's, uh, obviously the lake and some of the developments around the lake, uh, we tried to account for, would end up being about three-point-two KW of growth in the next ten years. So on a system of five-and-a-half peak, going to eight-point-eight peak in, potentially in the next ten years, which actually seems more realistic, uh, as the days go by here, visiting Scott and, and your team about the different residential, uh, developments popping up. So really exciting. Um, what we do here is we, we take a look at those projected loads and, uh, apply this design criteria that is, is pretty much standard for municipal, uh, electric distribution systems. Um, we want to look at, uh, what we call N minus one contingency or the reliability of the system if you lose any one piece of equipment. You should be able to backfeed with that one piece of equipment on and be able to handle the peak load, uh, of the city. So that's criterion one. Um, you want to maintain high level of, uh, high quality voltage throughout the system under that situation, class A voltage, as Anske would, uh, have that defined. And do not exceed, obviously, any of the thermal, uh, limitations, the heat, energy limitations of the equipment on the system at all. Uh, 'cause when that happens, usually, usually a piece of equipment fails under those circumstances. And then, uh, criterion four and five, basically, we need to design a system that's flexible so you can take on new loads without having to do capital infrastructure improvements every single time. So you want to build in headroom on the system capacity so you can, uh, take on new load and continue to grow consistently and effectively in the future. So that's our design criteria. Um, it includes load flow modeling, like I mentioned, voltage and capacity analysis. Uh, we've re- reviewed the overall, uh, equipment age and condition, which basically look at when the stuff was installed, has it been maintained, have, have there been any, uh, wear and tear, any damage that's, that's, uh, visible. So that's pretty basic. And then just visiting with the personnel in the operations side of it, is there any issues in the system today? So try to resolve those items and boil it down to a, and, uh, identify a number of deficiencies that we see that you could solve with capital improvement projects in, in the next ten years. So, uh, we'll run through the deficiencies that we identified. Um, so under existing peak load conditions, so the historical peaks you guys have seen today, um, there are just some minor capacity violations when you have to backfeed certain feeders. And this is basically the result of having, just, just some equipment needs to be upsized a little bit. Uh, we have some two-hundred amp elbows on mainline circuits on the system, so got just some kind of weedy details there you probably don't care about, but under the existing peak, uh, load conditions you've seen, you, your system's in pretty good shape there. When we apply the projected peak loads over the next ten years, that's where we start to see issues with our, uh, analysis. And primarily, we see because of the one-plus, you know, megawatt expansion in the next, expected the next one or two years certainly by Evapco, uh, we run into the power transformer in the substation becomes overloaded if you lose one of them and you have to feed your guys' projected peak load. So basically what that means is if one of the transformers is down today, which, um, like I mentioned, but in the substation, that whole sub was built in nineteen seventy-seven. It was built very well, it had a lot of headroom in the capacity of the transformers, um, it was quality materials and, and it was good stuff in the seventies. Um, what happens is, is as it gets older, odds of that, something happened to that transformer that, and requiring work increases. So the odds that you lose one of the transformers increases as the years go by. Well, if you lose one of those transformers and you happen to do it in the summertime and you hit a peak, you'd be overloading the other transformer, you wouldn't be able to pick up the rest of the town effectively without overloading that, that remaining unit. So that to me is one of the larger issues there as you see this load come on from Evapco from some of these, uh, lake area developments. Um, and then there are some of those capacity and voltage issues on those minor issues I mentioned with the existing peak. When you apply the projected peak, those increase in quantity and severity when you have to backfeed certain, uh, feeder circuits. So the switchgear in the substation is also in nineteen seventy-seven, I believe, or seventy-six, seventy-eight, somewhere in there. Um, one of those breakers goes down, you're trying to backfeed what that feeder was feeding through the distribution system. You can do that fairly well under existing peaks, but when you add that one to three mag in the next ten years, you find difficulties in doing that on the distribution system with some of the, uh, two-hundred amp elbows, uh, lack of backfeed ties for the Evap, future Evapco circuit. Um, if you go to bullet three, uh, there's some circuits with older underground cable that has open, open concentric neutrals on it, where they didn't jacket the cable. Uh, that was a big thing in like the eighties, I think, um, where that was going in the ground. Well, those concentric neutrals, they erode away, so you have an ungrounded, uh, feeder circuit. So those fail fairly regularly until they're just replaced. So a number of, of various clients in the municipal world that have been replacing that, like Lakeview has, it's been part of their practice to replace those old cables as a, as a budget for it and as they get to it. So that, that, that still exists on a couple of the distribution circuits, so I recommend, you know, replacing those over the next ten years, obviously. Um, but I mentioned briefly, the twelve-point-four-seven KV metal-clad switchgear aisle is, uh, forty-five years old. Um, some of the things that, that aren't mentioned on this slide are the, the controls, the protection controls that heater circuits have, uh, are fairly old. They're electromechanical style relays. Um, they actually require frequent testing if you want them to be a hundred percent accurate, um, long-term. So, long story short, some of those, uh, controls and some of those protect, uh, overcurrent devices are a bit antiquated at this time. So, uh, today, highly recommended to move to electronic relays. They add functionality in terms of, uh, monitoring and protecting the circuits, um, various settings, levels that can be implemented, and there are things that are a little bit safer about it as well, um, that come with, uh, a more modern, uh, switchgear. So that's one of the items. Um, the power transformers, again, this is part of just that style of system that was built in the seventies, they're, they're protected with overhead fuses, uh, sixty-nine KV, um, power fuses. And the fuse technology is just not, you know, it, it was the historical way to protect electric equipment, you know, pre-nineteen nineties when electronic relay became prevalent and has since, uh, kind of been the, the go-to, I guess, for any new installation. So the fuses, they're, uh, they're single-phase, they're single-phase, and, uh, so they don't have a fast instantaneous three-phase trip. So in a new system, um, to protect the transformer, which is a very expensive piece of equipment, probably the most expensive piece of, uh, electrical equipment on the system by far, um, to protect that the best, you need to interrupt any arcs, any, any faults, any issues immediately, and that's done with, you know, fast relays that have CTs connected to the high and low side of the transformer and they can detect any current, uh, current abnormalities that are seen on the system. So for, for, uh, to avoid getting into details you guys don't care about, I'm just gonna keep pushing ahead there, but are there any questions on that at this time? Um, is, is any of that making sense or do we need to, do we need to, uh, describe that a little bit better here? Sorry, I'm, I'm not skipping him, I'm just, I bumped something on this mouse. Enters in presentation. Okay, so I think I covered most of it. Okay, so I should touch the refund, um, briefly touch on, so the two sixty-nine KV lines feeding the substation, they come to a, a single pole, so they, they come to a single pole and then they tap into the substation. And so if we were to do any improvements there at the substation, you'd break that off so each could, um, each could be connected to the sub and to where you wouldn't have to call, do you guys have to call MEC to switch those lines?
Yes.
Yeah. So what you would do is bring both of the lines into a modified substation configuration where you would have control over the switches and you would be able to energize the sub by either one of those, uh, transmission lines. So the lines would be fed hot, switched, closed in on, on MEC switches, and then if something were to happen to one of those T-lines, which, which recently did, and it does, it's just the nature of the weather and our part of the world, um, you know, Jeff would be able to go in there, open this breaker, throw that breaker in, and you're back online and you don't need that MEC operations dispatch, uh, that seems like eternity when you have some sort of, you know, a weather event happening. So that'd be something fairly, you know, minor that you would fix if you're doing a substation project here. Um, I just threw in some pictures of the substation, if you guys weren't familiar with it, you know, these things kind of go unnoticed until, uh, somebody tells you, you should probably spend some money on them. So that right there is the, the metal-clad switchgear aisle, and you're looking at the backside of that, uh, uh, switchgear. So you walk in the left, the door to the left there, if you walk in, there's an aisle there, that's called the, the switchgear aisle, if you will. And then to the right, you have this lineup of relays and, and breakers, and that's what that looks like when you just walk right into that door. So those, those black boxes are the electromechanical relays, they have overcurrent protection for the feeders. Um, that, all that stuff was built in seventies and it was the right way to do things at that time. So you see, I guess, that little blue box in the, the bottom, to the right side there, that's, that's WAPA, your guys' transmission, your, your bulk supplier. They went to the little blue boxes, the electronic relays for the metering and everything, probably a number of years ago, but that's similar to what the relay would look like in a, in a newer lineup. And I guess one thing to note is, these, these breakers are from top to bottom, they, the air breakers are large and they require, the instrumentation's in the top, the breakers in the bottom, they're quite large. So today, the, the, the industry has moved to a vacuum breaker, it has a much smaller footprint, uh, and it's, it's just the modern technology for all those operates, so. That's kind of a step-back shot there of the overhead line terminals coming in from the MEC lines. Um, the transformers, you can see one of them there, the other one's kind of hidden in the back, but, uh, the line drops down, uh, is fed into the transformer, which then steps it down to twelve-five, goes underground into the switchgear to feed the switchgear lineup. and goes underground into the switchgear to feed the switchgear lineup. And then which the switchgear then is how the power is distributed to uh, the feeders across the town.
Is that's what you're saying? We have two of them now and if one goes down, the system could be overloaded on just one?
Right, yeah. Particular, like right now, you're fine today, um, because you have, you know, a total system of five point five. Each of those is rated for seven. So it's just when you add that, once you get to seven MVA plus on the system, that's when those transformers can carry it. So at that point, you know, you'd be monitoring it and you'd hope that things don't line up and it doesn't coincide at the same peak and, you know, but you could have issues there in the near future if Evapco really takes off with what the with the stuff that they're doing there. So to the improvements, um, phase one, we basically have distribution improvements included that accommodate Evapco's expansion from the east side of town. Currently, they're fed on the east rural circuit, which is an overhead circuit that heads east of town and feeds all the rural stuff outside. Basically, um, we recommend a new underground circuit to Evapco, running along the highway there if possible. That would tie into your other circuits as well. So where uh, Evapco would have mostly a dedicated circuit. So if lips out on the rural system, uh, re-closers are out in the system to interrupt any temporary faults, uh, squirrels, tree branches, whatever, wind when the lines flop together. Oh, re-closers disrupt the circuit and clear the clear the circuit and then it re-closes in because it's a temporary fault. Well, usually large industrial loads don't like that little flicker or that interruption. It's kind of a side note, but basically the Evapco circuit is what we probably ended up calling it would primarily feed Evapco uh, setup there, keep them online. And then you would tie that to your existing infrastructure to where you could backfeed that circuit. And also that circuit could be used to backfeed either of the the east rural or any of the other east city feeders. So that's one part of it. And then also just kind of putting a fork in that open concentric uh, cable that's still out on the system is when you do something like that. So phase one of the distrib- distribution phase one improvements, we'd have pegged for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four timeframe. But actually, those dates are just, they're suggestions based on your guys' loading. And it's obviously based on as that load comes on, you'll be able to see what's really happening at Evapco. Uh, and see, you know, how pressing these improvements are. But from what Evapco's told us and what, you know, the data we have on some of their equipment, it seems like they're gonna be pushing, you know, at least a meg and a half in the next short term. So um, one point four million roughly for the those distribution improvements in phase one. And then phase one, substation improvements, uh, basically up upgrading that substation to a modern setup. And in, you know, the near term, I guess, sometime before Evapco pushes you guys to that seven megawatt level is preferable because then you can maintain that N minus one redundancy that we recommend. So um, twenty twenty three to twenty twenty six. And uh, power transformers are about one and a half to two years out lead time wise. So something to keep in mind, it's it's a challenging uh, challenging piece of material to try to plan for right there. But that changes, you know, year to year, that fluctuates. Sometimes it's two years. I've seen it at forty weeks, you know. But just with all the weird material things going on, it's like, who knows why, you know?
So how long will it take to set up a phase one? How, you talking a year or six months?
Yeah, so distribution improvements, phase one, would you could get that done in the summer pretty easily. Yeah. Now, there's a a design and material procurement portion, but basically a year is what you would budget for that. Um, on the substation side of that, you know, the transformer's way out there. Some of those other items, the switchgear. You know, basically, you're talking about upgrading the transformer size, adding a new circuit. Another thing I should note is that existing switchgear lineup, it has five feeder bays. We recommend adding a sixth feeder bay for Evapco. Because today you have five, that's, Evapco feeder would be best served to come out of the switchgear on a separate feeder. So um, that being said, I mean, you know, obviously the financial side of this drives what you guys can do, uh, which you can work out, but it's based on the activity we're seeing in your guys' city here. Um, it it'd be a a good bet on the future to add another circuit there in the substation. So effectively what we're doing is we're we're increasing one of the power transformer sizes with a new transformer, a new switchgear lineup, and then the site work and steel and stuff that goes along with that to that even more modern substation. Um, you know, one of the, yeah, you you look at options here, but to me, I think it's, what's nice is is that you have that water treatment plant, that uh, old water treatment plant there. Um, you can do this without having to take outages on your system. So that's helpful, I guess. You have that property to the north that you could look at utilizing. Um, and maybe you keep this stuff online just because it has value. Um, I do know that salvage value of transformers is pretty good now too. So there's all kinds of details someone can look at once you get into the the design and phase of that. But so the substation portion of phase one is around three point five million. And these are numbers figured based on, you know, fourth quarter twenty twenty one, and there's contingencies in there. You don't know what inflation's gonna do. You don't know what some of these these uh, these commodity materials are are all over the board. Steel went up a hundred percent last year. So that's just, now that you've come down fifty percent, you know, they tell us that like, you know, cold rolled steel and stuff, it could come down, but I doubt they're gonna slash prices anytime soon. So all in all, phase one, around four point nine million in the first six years, over the next six years, I should say. Phase two, basically phase two equates to rounding out the upgrades of the new the new substation. So you would go to having dual transformers with top end ratings that'll allow you to backfeed. And if you lose one of the transformers or you have maintenance, you can easily carry the system's load with the other transformer. You know, you, what we've been doing is bidding multiple uh, ratings so you can see what that next level of of capacity, you know, costs. You know, there's things like that to be created about how you bid those things out, but um, yeah. So phase two are basically just substation improvements at that point. Um, and that's around. Go away. There we go, two point one million roughly. So um, those are the improvements. Any questions on that? I have some diagrams here that aren't very valuable unless you're closer, you guys are closer to me. But this here is an outline of your syst-, uh, a one line of your system. So the grayed out area to the bottom, that's the existing system with the two transformers, the five bay switchgear. And then in the future, what we would do is look at building that north. North of the existing site, you would build that new lineup, bring the new transmission line in, install the switchgear lineup and then tie it back into the distribution system. So that's schematically, that's what that looks like. And then the system map also shows where that Evapco circuit would be. It's in the north edge of town there. It's kind of that pink bold line work at the top going east out of the substation and along the highway there. Um, this is the first page of that of that improvement. And right there, it runs it out to uh, by that, by the rock uh, screen right there. It shows the loop feed feeding Evapco. So in summary, about seven million dollars over the next ten years is what we put together there. Hopefully with some headroom, with some contingency in there, we should be able to easily get that done. But you know, time is of essence as far as that that price is basically not gonna last terribly long at this rate. But so anyway, that's where we're at. Um, that's the study. Uh, like I said, the study will be finalized here and we'll have bound booklets with tabs so you can look at the illustrations better. Um, the analysis results are in tabulated form in the back appendix. You can, you know, look at the voltage drop calculations and what goes into that. A lot of exciting stuff going on, I guess, in the electrical side of things. Um, good growth that's not consistent among all small towns right now. I mean, uh, this town's got some things going forward as far as the lake and and it's pretty cool. So um, Evapco is driving quite a bit of this increased capacity requirement. So it's, they're a serious business. And any questions about anything I just covered there?
I think the word wow comes to mind.
Yeah. Yeah.
No worries for the council.
Well, I mean, you could probably fit it in there.
Jared, when do we start thinking about that? Was it March last year or April?
This study, I think it was the summer, May, May type, right? May, June, we started looking at it. And then this is something we just started doing. Yeah, it took probably from about May to, May to July, we wanted to, uh, we had some answers we needed to get on the system just to handle what was coming to town right away. So we had to do some transformer sizing, some things, working with Evapco back and forth, talking about, you know, their generation that they might install there. Um, so it was really, you know, kind of involved there for the first three, four months and then it took another month or so to put together costs and then uh, so yeah, we've kind of had this done for, you know, maybe a month, maybe. Staff time to review it and met with them a few times, but uh, yeah, so that's the long and short of it, I guess. Any questions?
Is there like a dollar amount that we, we could look at this to make sure that Evapco stayed the way we want them to stay or?
Um.
We're gonna do that line, obviously, is what you're doing. A dedicated line?
Yeah, so I mean, there's um, so that dedicated feeder is how I would design it up. So um, once they get to the one megawatt threshold, that kind of puts you guys over the top. One and a half mags roughly, um, gets you to that seven MVA. Um, it becomes difficult to backfeed them at all without an additional circuit that's tied in at those locations. You can't, it's hard to, it's hard to backfeed that location because they're on that rural circuit today. They're on a radial overhead line on the northeast edge of town. So it's like, there's not a good way to loop. I mean, there's just nothing there that, you could build some underground circuitry, but because of the way that that system's oriented there, you're on smaller radial conductor angles. You want a main line running most of the way out there for voltage concerns.
So 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 if we ran a main line out there, Evapco has a further expansion, would that main line be able to handle it? If there's, instead of double it, just, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yes. Uh, all the expansions they've told us about, you would be able to handle that with a, you'd run a four ought cable out there. Um, before we did purchase the cable, we would see, hey, what's your updated forecast? Like, you guys are growing here, but what's the next five, ten years? And then you would do it so they're they're fully sized, you know, the increment in cable size from four ought to three fifty. Cost wise, not probably not huge when you think about just doing it once for the next twenty years or whatever, however long they're gonna be in business. So, but yeah, that that's how you'd lay that out is for future growth. Probably probably double what they're projecting right now is what you probably want to gear for just because they've been fairly consistent. Scott has mentioned, um, every five years or so, they're they're growing that business. So it's not, it's not like it's dying away or anything like that. So.
How far north do we go for the Evapco road red line?
About a mile or two mile.
Really, really, the, are you serious?
There's a break for about half mile.
Yeah.
Norm Phillips, the winery, the E and.
Thank you very much, Jared.
Yeah, thanks for asking me. I, I saw you were down at Kent rather than, do you do some line checking down there? We were stomping around a little bit. We were.
We got here at two today, so we, we went around, looked at some things.
Yeah. So Scott has asked us to do a little assessment down in that camp area.
We don't know any of that information here.
What we do know is on the whole, okay, Camp Crescent isn't gonna the primary distribution system. So twelve point five on up, that's not the concern for Camp Crescent. Well, he's gonna have us look at the secondary. So once you get past that, you know, that first transformer, that steps it down and all the secondary's running around that campground, that's what Scott has asked us to take a look at.
So we don't know any of that information yet.
No, we can, no, took some pictures, made some notes and we're gonna, we're gonna model that secondary portion of the system more in depth than we do the other areas and see what's going on there. Basically, make sure that the upgrades are planning already are gonna be fine and adequate.
That's what we got, the reason on that.
Yep.
So do we allow soon that information to back to us?
Well, Scott just asked for soon, matter of weeks. So soon as, as soon as we get through it. Um, we should be, I'll talk to my designers to see how long it takes. I'd expect we know something in the next couple of months, the latest. There's a lot of stuff going on there, so.
Yeah, the, the reason I'm asking is because we're trying to figure out budget and upgrade some of the sites. We want to make sure that main wire going in the feed can actually handle it before we get too far down the road. So.
Yeah, yeah, I know. We'll, we'll make sure, at least check the basics there for the upgrades that they're planning to do. So yeah, we'll make, we'll, I'll express the need to get it done sooner than later before you guys, before you guys get going on. Kind of like with the system study, we we just crammed out the initial findings, like, okay, yeah, Evapco, go ahead and build. Cause there were concerns about that initially, but it's gotta happen. We might not be able to feed this and Jeff and those guys. So.
So down our current substation, we've got the two seven KV transformers.
Yeah, and MBA, yes.
Whatever, whatever those letters are. And you're saying if one of them would go down, one is still gonna handle everything today, depending on how much Evapco brings on, correct?
Yes.
And we can't really know that until they're up and running, correct?
Well, we have a good idea. They say that it's, they say two, we talked them down to two MVA transformers out there, right? Was that what we talked them down?
We took the two out and moved it over to the new building. That's what we're planning on doing. We haven't set it and they haven't had it up running because obviously the building's not up, rectified yet. But then we we put that seven fifty in, cause they were typically, they were using five hundred or KVA of a two thousand KVA transformer. So we bumped it to a seven fifty there to pick up, cause they were adding some more pieces of equipment. So we added that this fall. So then we kept the two thousand KVA and we're gonna move it over for their big testing unit building that they're, they're going to. So that that's the mags that we're talking about, has capability of picking up.
So is that that phase where you're talking about, apparently you're talking about building a new substation in that second phase two to the ground next to our water treatment.
Phase one starts that, phase one starts the upgrade of the entire substation. Phase two finishes it off.
Okay, so if I understand it right, we've got two seven down there now. And it can't be like we could put in one nine or, I don't love to make a nine, but can't put.
You're looking at a ten.
Ten and a half.
Ten, so we can't put one ten and a half in now. Now, the years down the road, put in a different ten and a half to kind of spread this out, you're not.
So what you could do is then I've been thinking about, okay, how can we make this more palatable? As opposed to doing phase two, say if you just did phase one, you could keep your existing stuff online and just tie it in. And so you could be using the, the two older transformers, just keep them, keep them humming. You know, you could divvy up some of the switchgear onto the new switchgear, right? The Evapco circuit, right? So you wouldn't have to do this phase two in the last part of this 10 years. You could, you could keep the forty-five year old units, get them, keep them tested, make sure everything's still working properly. And they have, they've, we've tested these things recently, I believe. I saw those. But you could keep it intact until you guys were able to afford it or budget it. So that's one way I would, could potentially look at it is, phase one is more kind of the key here. But it's like, let's, let's really think hard about doing this because that's some immediate concerns as Evapco comes online.
All right. And then while you're talking about that, I just want to be clear because I've looked at that thing that Scott sent us and I'm seeing this on one of your slides. It says, replace existing bare cable on West City and Halletts circuits. Is that Halletts circuit, that three phase that goes out there that they don't use no more?
It's, we are using, in town, we are using that circuit. There is.
The Halletts load went away, but you guys are now using that circuit.
The Halletts load we don't have, but the Conagra load used to be on the rural load.
Okay.
We've, we've moved it down. Yeah, we did that a few years ago.
And this is stuff that, is this stuff, this isn't underground? Never still have poles out there, right?
That Halletts circuit's totally underground.
The other ones of, of the poles?
The rural, the west rural is overhead.
That's a good point because when that, Halletts was the big thing in the last study years ago. I remember, I was reading through the old reports and Halletts was like, it was like the Evapco, right? It was like, hey, you're doing this. Well, they kind of went away because it's the nature of that business. I guess it was a gravel pit.
And they had electric dragline back then. So then now they, they typically are all diesel fuel running. So that's what happened.
That's what happened. Okay. Yeah. But they've since utilized that circuit to help backfeed and it really kind of makes it easier to, to move over across the system if you need to. So, good question.
Any more? That is the only line that we got to finish yet, isn't it? Is this line going south?
When, when you look at that, at that map.
Yeah, from the Viaduct to the edge of town.
Just to the edge of town?
Yeah, it's, it's your, it's your West City line and your Halletts line from Viaduct, well, substation out to the edge of town. And then the west rural line out of the substation two right there by Bob Blessington's where it goes up a riser pole, which feeds your rural line.
And that's projected, oh, plus the new Evapco mainline circuit. All right, thank you.
Well, guys, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Thanks. Appreciate working with a city like you.
Okay, we want to talk a little bit about the budget.
Anybody has any additional questions or details? Just get a hold of Scott and I can, we'll get you an answer. Do what you need.
So are we still talking about doing the 50 amp on the lake front? Do we have a decision on that?
I appreciate you coming. They, uh.
Yeah, I'm sure that's interesting.
Because that, the upsizing of those, of those lakeshore lots, it was not a, a real large capital project for us here. It was basically buying the new boxes and using the existing cable that's in there, which, which would be of the appropriate size. We just wanted to make sure that we didn't run into any problems when we would upsize that.
So we're waiting for them, DGR, to give us that information?
Yeah.
We're just kind of looking at a load part on that.
Just want to walk through a few things in regards to the, to the budget. And there are, you know, of course, when we, when we get to the end, you'll see that there's still some, some funds that are proposing a negative expenses over revenues for the year. So just the, the changes that are in here. Page, started on page twenty. As far as, as the wages, all the wages then were, were changed to show that three percent wage increase. So basically all full-time wages are, are supposed to go up three percent for budget. And we went through the, the information then on, on the parks. Questions on wages? Next page then on, on twenty-two and twenty-three, this starts to talk more about then the, the year one of the capital improvements plan. And again, if, if it's listed in this capital improvements plan, it would be, be listed in year one of the, of the budget. So just some other things of note, like in the, in the electric. All of those subdivisions, the land, the Outlot Twenty Lakewood, Hanky Shaven, that is, that shows, that shows cost then for, for the replacement on that. And then.
Now, now, when you're talking about that, putting that electric in there, Scott, as we talked last time, what figures are we using for our costs?
Those, those are the same numbers that have been in this capital improvement plan. So they're different than what we would have for the.
But it's different than our actual cost then because cable was two bucks in your figures and it's actually three eighty now.
Yeah, I did not, I did not.
So it's, these are not.
I love that stuff, no.
Right, okay. That, you know, that's, that's, when we're trying to do budget, how do we budget for something when we know these figures aren't accurate? We already know these figures aren't accurate. You use two dollars a foot and it's three eight.
True.
Okay. So how do we go through and say, well, this is what we're gonna budget, and I, I don't care which one, this Outlot Twenty, for example. We got budgeted twenty-six thousand, it's gonna cost us thirty-five thousand. So now that's way over what we budgeted. How do we get, how do we get updated real number?
So would, would we, add like twenty-five percent?
That's not enough. Now that's two dollars a foot when he was figuring it and now it's three eight. And a transformer was two thousand dollars and now they're thirty-seven fifty. Because if we go through and approve of this budget, then I don't care what, what project we're talking about. When we go to do it, it's gonna cost us twice as much. And now we're short.
These, these numbers are understated.
Correct. That's why for.
They won't be any good until July first when we start anyway. So whatever we project is gonna be wrong.
I guess, but you still need to have.
Have a, have a lot closer projection than.
We're, we're way off. I mean, it's real. And that DGR guy was just here talking about how stuff has skyrocketed. Steel went up a hundred percent last year. I, I, I just feel very uncomfortable trying to approve a budget with numbers we know that are not accurate. And that's asked us a couple of times now.
I got, I, I got a question. Why was that northwest water loop taken out? You know, that four hundred and seventy-some thousand dollars?
Yeah, that was the discussion at the last council meeting about.
Oh, we, we talked about it. But why was it, I mean, it's still under discussion. So why is it taken out? Because we, we, the, the study says that we got after that, shows that it's, you know, it's not, it's not a pressure issue, it's a volume issue. This B and K.
Right, yeah.
So, you know, we, we still, we still got an issue. Are we just not gonna fix it?
That, that you had made the, the decision about first project being that loop feed project up there.
Yeah. But. And we, and we did talk about doing the loop feed first. And, but, okay, and I don't know if we really want to jump around, but since Mike brought it up, that highway loop feed, highway, whatever we'll call it, Jacobson Highway, pass there, and then the loop feed around the school and stuff. We have a budget for one forty-nine, putting that water study program thing that we got from
B and K.
B and K, that's like two hundred and some thousand dollars.
For just the, it's just the one section, the one section of it. Which I thought I added by around a hundred and twenty, Dale, and added some cost for the, for the connection there at Jacobson.
Okay, but in here, in our budget, it's just telling us right here, loop feed around the school and the highway, highway, school, water main loop.
Yep.
And that's that loop to go by, you said by, passed by Bill Riley, right?
Yeah.
And then if we look at, if I look at the VK thing, unless I'm looking at something incorrectly, which I could be, northwest, highway one seventy-five, water main, west water main loop, them two things total three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, it doesn't propose to, to do the park there in front of the old shot restaurants. That, that's basically from.
So we're not doing that part now?
Yeah, no, this, there's an existing four inch line that, that runs, good four inch line that runs all the way over to Denny's house basically, right?
Right. So where's the two inch one that we're replacing?
Is the.
Little short stubbed.
From, from Jackson Street and basically stubs backwards to the, to the restaurant, to the.
It's just the rest.
It's just the rest.
Just the rest of the hotel.
It's four inch across the highway.
So.
We've dug it up.
So four inch goes from.
Jackson corner, Jackson Street corner.
Is that the Car, Old Car Wash corner?
The school corner.
The school corner.
Comes straight across to Jacobson's. And then it elbows and goes down to Denny's house.
Okay, so it goes north across the road.
And then west.
And then west. And then this, the, the little two inch east line that goes over to Faze is the little piece that needs a dress. And that's, and so it's being fed on, from Jackson Street and then it goes north.
Jackson or Ninth, I don't, there's, there's a valve there and I'm not a hundred percent sure.
And is that four inch that's coming across there then?
Yes.
And then it goes east with the two inch down to the motel and Levi Teese's.
It used to go all the way to Levi's, but back when, uh, Crow's bought it. George had, um, Schmitz bore the highway and he ran his own service.
From one building to the other?
He ran it across the highway and put a shut-off on, on that main.
So then, so the highway one seventy-five main water is not this two forty-five like in this study?
True. The, it's just that portion, Dale, that from, from Jacobson's off, not even from Jacobson's off to the west, but basically from Denny's house on around. Not a.
That Denny's house, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the only proposed work. Other than the fixing, fixing up that two inch there and, and making a new connection there basically in the parking lot of Jacobson.
So they just did this in June of twenty-one?
Yes.
So what were, how come they were proposing so much more than that?
They gave different options. Boy, they, well, yeah, you see that they, they gave substantial options about ways to fix that, what amounts to a problem about a four inch line running in front of school. That's, that's, when you get to the bigger projects, that's what's fixed it.
Okay.
So we need to get some updated figures on this.
We can rework. Yeah, let's turn on this one first.
So that one originally was replacing all eight hundred feet of that.
Yeah, it, the project is a lot bigger than, than what it got scaled out to. Because actually, when you look at that map, and it, it'll show a two inch main.
I see that.
All the way across that highway. And that's just not true. And Dean, they, they had dug it up in several different spots and connected.
Well, we, when we dug it up for Jacobson Seeds new building and tapped that.
Yeah.
We confirmed that it was four inch there. When we went down to Tyson Beckman's.
Yep.
And dug it up and tapped that, confirmed it again that it was four inch.
And but our maps say it's two inch.
And then this here doesn't even show that line going across for Levi's building.
Nope, that's private lines.
So that project now is just this here portion of.
For the most part, yeah. Up there in, in Jacobson's parking lot, there's a new connections up there.
Right.
And does some stuff with two inch on this one.
So we're gonna put eight, is that gonna be eight or six inches?
Six.
And do, we don't, so that's what we talked about that last meeting, seeing if that was gonna make a difference in our water volume up in that northwest part of town.
Right.
Right. And then.
But if it does, but if the volume doesn't fix it, what are we gonna do? We're just gonna can the rest of the deal? I mean, you took four hundred and, what, four hundred and seventy thousand out of the budget.
Four and five years.
Yeah, just, I mean, the, the options are certainly still out there, Mike, as far as, you look at the pressure system and Dale's talked some about water storage up there, you know, whether we can have some other options.
I did ask, out of curiosity, I said, what would a small water tower cost to put up on that part of town? Because that's where the water tower used to be.
Yeah.
Or a water storage facility. Because when you're spending five hundred thousand dollars, we don't know if it's actually gonna fix anything. I, I, I do agree, we gotta move forward with at least part of that loop. All right. So. I hate, I hate to say this, but you know, how hard is it to get us some updated current figures for this stuff?
Certainly make it happen, yeah.
And then I got a silly question, but you know, like we got the basket truck set aside in there at forty and some other stuff like that. Is there a way that, like the wastewater treatment plant demolition set aside, is that something that we can not put in our budget, but maybe have it in the general fund if some of these other projects don't go through? Does that make it sense that way instead of having it in a certain part?
You mean just have it in the budget, but then if we have to use it for some of these other projects, we'll just go ahead and move that money over?
It, it certainly can happen, yeah. We, at the end of the, the end of the fiscal year, we will, we'll make some additional transfers. And.
We did that one time. We took mine from trees or.
Ash tree.
And ash tree, we used that for the, what was it, for the grasshopper, was it for?
Yeah, I don't recall, but yeah.
Or beside of that there or something like that.
We switched before.
Yeah. Because I know, I mean, I'm just saying that we've got, we've got to trim our budget down somewhere, right? The way it looks, because we're in a negative, if I'm looking at, is sheet rate, whatever page that is. Page twenty-nine.
Yep, that is a good one to take a look at. Take a look at page twenty-nine.
We've, we've got to trim some stuff out of there. And I'm looking at that set aside stuff. We've, we've gotta trim some stuff out of there, and I'm looking at that set aside stuff to start with, with all this other stuff going on. Because we know we gotta do Outlot Twenty. Right? We're already, we gotta do that. We've got, you know, we committed to that, we got a thing in place, we've got, um, uh, stuff on hand to finish the landing if it's not done. Uh, and then we've got, there's another thing that we couldn't, we've already committed, oh, shavings down there. He's gonna need that done. That overhead line south of Provost, is that something that needs to be done, or is that just something we think should be done?
It's something that needs to be done, but it, it depending on how fast they want to develop that hanky property.
Okay.
It's gonna be your issue there.
So if that property gets developed, that needs to be done right with it. If it doesn't get developed.
Push it off a year or two.
Yes.
But that loop water main, I see that's a hundred forty-nine in the negative, but aren't we using the ARPA funds today?
Yeah. So it, it just didn't show any money coming in?
Oh, okay.
Good money has been received.
That'll skew that bottom number, not that much.
Yeah, you know, I, I don't want you to be not, don't say you'd be hung up about what that bottom, bottom number looks like, but I do want to take a look more at the difference within each fund. And because there, there are, oftentimes, there are projects that we have saved money for, and that, and that's why it's, why the end number is, it looks to be so, uh, that's seven sixteen in the ground, uh, in the hole. But, you know, so just as, as we just talked through this by fund, the general fund being a hundred thirty-nine thousand in, in the hole, that has at least a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars going towards streets. I mean, so that, again, these are things that, that we had, um, were able to have, have funds on hand to, uh.
That hundred seventy-five, what'd you say that?
Streets. So we're at fifty thousand towards streets, and it says a hundred twenty-five towards Outlot Twenty on streets. So, yeah, there's.
So that's out of the general?
Yes, that'd be transferred out of the general fund, yeah.
So that's why that's down a hundred thirty-nine?
Yep. Road use tax, and another one where we, we have these funds on hand, we're transferring that to the, to the street capital fund, really looking for that, uh, doing that large street construction project. And so those funds are on hand, it's, it's a deficit in the fund, but, uh, again, it's been planned for.
And that's that Lake Street.
That would propose north, north half of Lake Shore Drive, um, and then an asphalt street project. This says Sixth Street and Seventh Street, but, uh, not married to that, just the, uh, the idea about how much money we're dealing with for a project.
Okay.
Sales tax, you see, is forty-four thousand to the, to the good, we have more revenue than expenses, but, um, we'll continue to have that discussion about whether we can utilize those funds for, for other type of expenses, or whether we would, would look at, uh, offsetting part of the, the housing development costs with, with that. Okay? TIP, three hundred forty-four thousand dollars in the hole, that is utilizing the funds for, uh, the community center. So that, it'll show an expense of four hundred seventy-five thousand in there, and that puts it three forty-four in the hole.
But, but then we also are using TIP for something else, right? Because we got total expenditures of seven seventy-three.
Yep, the other, the other main expense out of that is the Phase Two Evapco water line. For the non-grant portion of that.
Non-grant.
Yep. Yep. Hotel motel, again, that's, uh, right now, that's, uh, revenue exceeds expenses by five thousand dollars. Specialist assessments, basically, in, in and out, paying debt, as is debt service, uh, in, in and out, paying the debt there. And you see the capital projects, okay, so looking at the expenditures, we have a two hundred forty-eight thousand dollar, um, street project. That includes, I think that includes twenty thousand dollars for, uh, redoing intakes, okay? Okay, so again, that's, that shows a little deficit there, but that's money that we have saved in, in preparation of a, of a project. Okay? Um, transferring funds, uh, in for the street at Outlot Twenty and then expending that out. A little bit of planning funds, those are usually just contributions that end, that end up in our, in our capital projects fund. Um, council AV figuring three thousand dollars here, again, that's, uh, funded by ARPA money, COVID money. Okay, that community center shows, shows in and out. It's, that would be grants and donations, uh, to, to fund the community center. So it's just the same amounts of, of revenues versus expenditures. Uh, Evapco Phase Two, that is, um, the expenses on, on getting that, that water line out there. That is the grant amount, was the four, the four eighteen, and then there was an additional expense from TIP. Okay? Uh, Fire Bus, again, that's, uh, that is, uh, has an assumption there of receiving some, some grant funds for Fire Bus and then the a hundred twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, expense. Pickleball, receiving, uh, another fifty thousand dollars worth of, worth of grant funds and expending seventy-five thousand dollars worth of grant funds, there's twenty-five thousand in the sales tax. Was, was where the, I believe it was sales tax that we were, uh, having that other twenty-five thousand dollars that the city committed.
TIP, because we got one correct for that already, correct?
We received twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Yep, the city committed twenty-five thousand.
Right.
And then there's, Connie was just saying she has several grant applications that we're ready to go and submitted one today. Um, generators, that would be City Hall and at the, uh, at the fire department. Okay, and then that, that water, the loop water main shows there, and that's that ARPA funding for the, uh, for the water main, again, it shows as a, as a negative expense, because the funds are on hand. Okay, fire hydrants, we talked about this at the, uh, at the last meeting about wanting to increase the budget then for fire hydrant maintenance. What this does is adds another ten thousand dollars to fire hydrant maintenance, that would be ARPA funds there to, to utilize, uh, for fire hydrant. Uh, water tower, that's, that's the amount of money we receive from the cell tower at least there, and that goes to our water tower maintenance fund. Okay, uh, that thing called transfer to sewer, we have a hundred and ten thousand dollars that's just been basically as a savings, uh, account for the, for the lagoon project. Now we come to the end of that, that just transfers that, uh, saved a hundred and ten thousand dollars into the, into the sewer, um, sewer fund. Okay, but then here's that wastewater, uh, treatment plant demo, has twenty thousand dollars coming in, and that's, that would just be saving money. That twenty thousand is proposed to be ten thousand from lost and ten thousand from sewer. But as you, you will see that the sewer is, is in, is in the hole, that may one, be one thing we need to take a look at. Street sweeper, about, uh, how we would start to save money for street sweeper.
Is it, I'll back up a minute, is this the first year where we are requesting money for the?
For the sewer plant?
Sewer plant.
We saved some money out of this current budget that we're in. This, this would be the first year, the budget would be the second year.
All right.
Um, general, where it says general, that's the general capital improvements, so that's buying, uh, mainly lawn mowers and, uh, and police cars. So, uh, trying to save some money towards our, towards our next police vehicle. Public Works, again, that's, that receives twenty thousand dollars from, from water, twenty thousand from sewer, so that shows forty coming in. It's twenty from each of those, and really not much for expenses, other than a fifteen hundred dollar cart for the, uh,
Chop, chop saw.
Thirty thousand dollars transferred into electric improvement fund, and this does put forty thousand into a basket fund, basket truck fund. So just as you look at the total capital projects, it runs that hundred eighty thousand dollars in the hole. But again, these are, are projects that we have been preparing for, and it has a lot to do with the streets. Water, okay, now we get into some, and to where we consistently have expenses exceeding revenues, and this is, this is a challenge. Fur water. Tell you that the, uh, expenses exceed revenues by twenty-three thousand dollars, uh, twenty-three, eight, eight hundred there. Okay? Now, when you look at, at the reasons why, the biggest reason deals with, uh, a change in, in salaries, about how salaries were accounted for, and that Dean's salary comes out of water now. And it, uh, we had one and a half persons who were, uh, laborers coming out of there before. It's twenty-eight thousand dollars difference, and that, uh, is with salaries, twenty-eight thousand. Some other things that, that you can think about, though, so we have some capital projects there, more fire hydrants, more, uh, working to replace some valves, it's fifteen thousand dollars. So that, you can, uh, could consider paying for that, say with sales tax money. Outlot Twenty water system comes out of that also, and you could consider paying for that with sales tax money if you, if you look at some options there. On sewer, you see that sewer runs twenty thousand dollars in the hole. Tell you, don't have, have a whole lot of, uh, reasons why, other than the, uh, the expenses will not be reoccurring in the future. Okay, one, so one of the things is that it sets aside ten thousand for the, um, for the wastewater treatment plant demo, so ten thousand dollars is in there. Other things to consider, we pay crop damage yet on, on, to the farmers for that lagoon project. That's nine thousand dollars is budgeted for that, for this upcoming year. That's the final year that we pay crop damages, so that's not a recurring expense in subsequent years. And also, we budget the final payment to the lagoon, so I told you, we're transferring a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And then also, we have our last little bit of SRF money that we could, that we could draw, but it amounts to about fifteen thousand dollars over that, that we need to, will pay in retainage cost. So, again, so that fifteen thousand dollars is a one-time payment that won't occur in the future. Uh, you look at the electric utility then, where that runs a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in, in the hole. The other thing in the council packet that I would call your attention to and, and, uh, hope that you had looked at is that information on power supply. And what's happening with our transmission cost per power supply continues to go up. And this past year had a, had a very significant increase in transmission. We do not anticipate that the transmission costs will continue to go up, but they'll stay at the same level. So our.
How come them do vary so much? I looked at that, some years they're up fourteen, fifteen percent, and then down fourteen, fifteen percent. What's the reason for that, can you answer that?
So we have this regional transmission through MISO. And, uh, the, any of the transmission owners are, are eligible to put in their costs, basically, of, of the transmission. And, and so long as they can justify what those costs are, things are gonna change on, on the transmission. And that was the explanation that our, our consultant had given us, is that Mid-America had some significant improvement in transmission here in the past.
That has to do with the ratio?
Couple of years. I don't, I don't know if things included in there.
I'm just curious if anybody gave you that. Is that something we talked about when I was at that meeting in Des Moines?
Sure.
Thirty-eight point seven percent.
Thirty-eight percent. And, you know, the hell of it is, when you look at those transmission costs, that's really something that we just do not have any control. It's, it all has to do with the MISO, that's our regional transmission organization. And it's just a pass-through cost, then, we end up paying that amount through MEAN, that's who we're paying it to. But, uh, but it's just a pass-through from what, from what Mid-America had for transmission.
So, so we pay that through MEAN?
We do, yeah.
So MEAN went down in two thousand seventeen, sixteen percent. Oh, that's power cost.
Yeah. Yeah, I always think of power, I guess, in, in those two, in those two, in those two components, you always have power cost, and then you have transmission cost.
So the power costs went down sixteen percent, but the transmission went up twenty-five?
Yes.
So went twenty-five that year, and then down twelve the next, up four, then down eight, then up thirty-eight. So it's all over the board, is it based on what they spend money on?
It is ba, it, it is a cost recapture allocation for what they, what they have, have invested into their system.
So it has nothing to do with the windmills? Well, because they're putting that cost in, they're gonna.
This has to do only with the transmission system.
Lines, okay.
It, it wouldn't, that would, yeah. Because ultimately, I think it does have something to do with the windmills, about transmission for the windmill power.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, but it doesn't have directly to do with the, there's a windmill out there.
So. With that being said, how long do we go before we actually have to look at our rates?
That, I talked with, with Jared about that today. You know, as we're thinking about potentially any of these very large construction projects, um, certainly would do a rate study before we ever look at doing a pro, a project like.
Would have.
Yeah.
But if for, if this, like, next year, this doesn't change with our transmissions and stuff, that are wholesale power cost, we might have to look at that regardless, just to, just to stay status quo?
Yeah. So, yeah, on, on the electric thing. So, this is, this is a good thing, I guess, for the electric department, even though we're still a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars to the bad. I told you that the water salaries had increased twenty-eight thousand dollars, well, electric salaries decreased thirty-seven thousand dollars. And that just has to do with how, you know, we had budgeted for bill salary before, and that all came out of electric previously. So that ended up being a shift from, from electric to water. Basket truck, um, is, is in there for forty thousand dollars, is set aside. And then we have those housing development costs, adding those up in there, it, uh, it was around a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that's there right now. So, you know, as we look at those housing development costs and explore options about issuing any debt to pay for those housing development costs. The other thing that I would at least tell you about, although it's there for a reason, and you may not want to dip into it, is this thing called the electric improvement fund, and we just think of that as our rainy day fund.
What, what page is that on?
And so that's the fund balances, then on the next page, uh, thirty. So, um, we're there in, in that middle section, the electric improv, the electric improvement fund. You just think of that as our rainy day fund, we intentionally save money for a, for the rainy day. And we, we had utilized this before during storm damage, that type of stuff. But at the end of next year, we would have a balance in there of five hundred forty-six thousand dollars. I mean, it's, uh, the funds are there, and they'd be able to be used if, if you'd like to look at some project expenses there.
Do the costs have, way of them following out last time?
Yeah. Yeah, but, but, but the other, the other side of that is that those costs get to be so large so quickly that we end up looking at, at having to issue debt when that happened anyway.
Where do you see?
Are you, are you there now, on this page?
Oh, electric, right here, projected ending balance, twenty-two, twenty-three, right here. Debt service one, that's the five hundred forty-six you're talking about?
It's under the one called electric improv, fourth from the right.
So I got, um, let me see what page it is. So page thirty-four. These funds. Money market funds, checking, CDs, checking, PSF accounts, or whatever that is. We've got a total of point, three point eight million.
Yes.
How much of that money is set aside for these special projects, or savings funds, like you're talking about, like for streets or whatever?
You can tell a lot of that from, from the sheet, and it, and it just breaks it down by fund.
Oh, your stuff's got to be amazing.
When you, when you look at the highlighted lines there, the projected ending balance at, at the end of, of this upcoming budget year.
So they were all told, if I told all of them up, that would come to one of these figures?
Yeah, if you told up the highlighted lines. Yeah, if you told up the highlighted lines, and then look at the lower right-hand corner, the highlighted line is two point seven, two six million.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's, that's it. That's the proposed ending budget, ending balance at the end of next year.
And so, what's this total balance of three point eight right now, then? That's what's in there currently today?
Yeah, that's just our, that's just reconciling at the end of January. That's, that's the money on hand.
Because we gotta go to July first?
Yeah, yeah.
Scott, I have a question. Are there any, is there any assistance, federal assistance for this electric project? There has to be some.
I say Connie just, just texted me three different things while you were sitting there.
She's worth, she's worth her weight in gold, I would say.
Yeah. We have the same check.
We'd have to check it out.
You have to take advantage of that stuff.
So, just as, as we think about timeline on this, at the next council meeting on the twenty-first, we're going to have a public hearing about that maximum property tax rate. Okay, but at that same, at that same meeting, we need to set a public hearing date about the, about the budget. So, basically, by the next, by the next council meeting, we can finalize the budget. We can come up with the, the different costs on, the updated costs on, on electric improvements. And what else would, what else would you like to see?
Well, I'd like to see us being red under the black a whole bunch, but it's not going to happen. But my question is, some of the, is it ridiculous for us to not put in the certain, like, the electric budget to set aside, or the parks budget stuff, you know? Some of that stuff that we're, the sewer, that twenty thousand to set aside, just, why are we taking money out of our budget when we need the money to save it for something down the road, but we need to spend it on something today? That's my question.
Well, trucks were a good, good example of saving money, with that truck.
I totally agree with that, on this hand. But it's also dumb, on this hand, to go borrow twenty thousand dollars for me to put it in a savings account if we gotta go borrow money to do these other projects.
Because if the sweep were crapped out tomorrow, we'd rob the money from here and here, buy a vehicle.
So, what, again, again, we're borrowing money to put in our own bank account, to save it for something we're going to move down the road. But to me, that doesn't make sense. Do you go borrow money at the bank to buy a car that you're not buying yet?
Haven't done that yet.
Well, that's exactly what we're trying to do here, if we're going to have to borrow money for these projects. See what I'm saying? So, we gotta trim something out of the budget, so we're not borrowing money.
What you're saying is trimming the things that we're saving for.
Correct. And this, if, because if all these development things go through, we don't know that they're going to, but we're trying to budget for them. If they don't go through, then we got it sitting there, we go back to it. Does that make sense? I mean, I don't think anybody here would go borrow money to put in their own bank account to wait to buy a vehicle. And that's essentially what we're doing here.
Yeah, I guess the way that this would, would work is, you know, we make these transfers into the, into the savings account, you know, just at the end of the year. And if there's no money there, we wouldn't transfer, but-
I know, but we're putting it in the budget.
In the budget.
And so, it's, and now we're, we're putting all this stuff in the budget, and we don't have enough money to do everything, we gotta borrow the money. And we've talked about it, like, in the housing committee meeting, we talked about that. Well, what are we going to do? If these developments go through, we're going to have to borrow money. And we, and we don't even have our actual cost on these projects. We're using a year ago's numbers. Scary to me, because I see it every day, the cost of stuff skyrocketing. And you just heard the guy from DGR talk about the same thing.
Sure, yeah.
And now, we had a guy present us that we got seven million dollars we're going to spend on electric over the next ten years. I shouldn't say have to, but propose to. John's holding his chest like he's having a hard time.
I'm still recovering from seven million dollars in electric.
It's got a part back. That's just by two cents worth, on one out of five.
But as, as you look at those stuff, and I know we talked about that before, Dale, about, about those ones that, for the, mainly the sewer plant demo and the basket truck. You know, those were the two things that got, that got mentioned about football.
Yeah, because, to be honest with you, I would like to see us take some of that money and do more Omni Beacon alarm notification setup, and more manhole repairs, so we don't have bigger issues down the road. That's my two cents worth. That, the Omni Beacon thing is going to save us money in the future. Now, I know these people over here probably don't want to hear that, but it takes their time away from driving around the lake every day, isn't it? They're, they're stressing up with all their work they got to do.
They could be pulling weeds.
We've got guys for that.
We've got guys for that.
But they're busy trimming trees right now, so. So, then, as, as you look at, at this budget, you know, so we're, of course, work at the cost estimates on the electric side of things.
Well, I think you gotta look at the water side of things too, Scott. And I'm pretty sure that them costs ain't the same. I know what the price of hot plastic concrete is for, how about you, Jeff knows too.
Just like you kept what we did that we paid for already, because the company I got it from tried to buy it back from us.
I didn't believe it.
No, it's serious.
Because it'll double the price.
Yeah. Well, no, not necessarily, because we still-
I'm sorry, John, but I just don't want to rush through this, because, and I know it's been three or four long meetings, but it's just stuff that I think we need to talk about as a council.
I'm not saying you're wrong. If we go back and really adjust our numbers.
Which we will. And we need to have that discussion, additional discussion on the, on the housing incentive. And where that, where that-
Where we're going to go in on that, at twenty dollars a square yard or thirty.
But now, we had a meeting Friday with Zach County Supervisor, and he is open to trying to work with us and all the other towns, coming up with a committee program. Am I saying that the right way, Kenny?
Yeah.
Like, so, what, what Jim Wester would like to do, he's going to talk to the two supervisors, is get a member from each city to sit on a committee. And then come up with a program, and work with the county, to come up with a program, and they were going to use ARPA money. Because it's, they can use it for non-budgeted stuff, and they got, like, I don't know, nine hundred thousand a couple times, that they could use for this. So, whenever you guys are going to have lunch, I highly recommend you guys are all there. Is that Thursday?
It's Thursday.
Thursday, and I won't be there. But they're gonna add, he's gonna talk to the other supervisors, they're gonna ask about having a representative for each city. So, then, when Lakeview's got stuff going on, and Wall Lake's got stuff going on, and Auburn or Odebo, they can't say they're picking and choosing, here's a program we have set up. Matching-type funds is what he was talking about, saying, so we can't just say, Odebo, here's thirty thousand for you, or fifty thousand, if you ain't got matching funds to go in there. But that's what they were initially talking about in a roundtable discussion. And that's what he's going to talk about Thursday night more in depth, right?
Yeah, can you bring up that, bring up that topic about, yeah, coming, coming up with what would be a county-wide plan to, to assist those communities who are proceeding with some, some housing stuff? And, of course, not every community is, is proceeding, but there are some that are, that are pretty aggressive on it, and this could conceivably help us out a lot.
Correct.
I talked to Scott Bunn in SAC, and he said they're looking at a couple different housing projects, and-
He mentioned SAC, he mentioned Odebo and Wall Lake. And he said he tried to talk to somebody in Auburn, and it's like talking to the wind, and he thinks Auburn is sitting on a goldmine. But if they come up with a program, then one of the other towns can't come to them and say, well, you didn't bring it to us, you only went to them. Well, it's a program for all the communities in SAC County.
So, as we think about participating with housing development, and then think about the budget, I know the, the ideal situation is to incorporate that in, into the budget at some point. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be. I mean, it's not like you could fail to put it in the budget and, and then not do it. I mean, we could, we could do this later on, but-
I can foresee, I can foreseeably see us, with the housing development thing, borrowing some money for that, because now we're going to be paying ourselves back with the potential income and taxes. But I hate to get stretched out so far that if these developments don't go through, and those costs get to us so much. And I've been doing some driving around with the water in my hand, and looking at some of these streets, and twenty-nine feet's not wide enough. In fact, I drove down, the day I drove down to the, on Irwin Street, that's a twenty-nine-foot wide street with parking on both sides. If you have a car on both sides, you ain't getting a rescue vehicle through there. And that's a concern, especially at the one with the cul-de-sac, or any of them that have a cul-de-sac.
We have to let it just park in on one side of the road.
Or fix it right before we do it, though.
We can certainly approach one of the developers to do that.
Right.
Say, if, if you're going to take a look at different street specs in regards to the width, or the base, having a base with it, you know, that type of stuff, that would just be done through the development?
The other thing that's happened, you know, recently, you know, with due, right, wrong, or indifferent, there has been some more ground coming up for sale, and more lots are going to become available, that weren't available to build on as well. But I, I'm assuming all you guys are aware of it, but Rybeck at Lakewood out there are going to subdivide off, I think there's seven lots?
Five.
Five lots. And then on the north side of that, Lakewood Partners got that ground for sale for people to build. I mean, so there is some places already today with infrastructure in place. Thank goodness. Now, whether they get sold or not for an asking price or not is another thing.
Rybeck's, we have to do a little electric stuff, and I actually talked to Jared about something there, but it's fairly simple, I think, resolution to that. It's still going to cost us a little something.
Is there, and then I talked to them today, is there a water or sewer line running through that parking lot, too?
Well, I don't know.
He was wondering about that.
I don't know.
Yeah, there's. That's the one where there's sewer on the south side of, of the parking lot, so it's in Lakewood Drive.
Yes.
North or south side of the street, not sure, but there, there's water that runs past there?
So, where their lots are projected to be built, we don't have any of the data away?
True.
Okay.
Rybeck's, Rybeck's would be on the south side of the building now, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, did you see?
That, that would be where I'd have a little more infrastructure of electric to build for that. But the other side, there's a, there's a cabinet right out on North State Road that we would come up with to feed the front lots.
I got a picture here somewhere, let me try to- That's Scott, maybe.
Dale, did you see your dumpster ready to take ours?
I did, thank you. That is wonderful. That's coming, that super's coming up in two weeks.
There you go.
So, do you want to go through some of this again, Scott? I'm sorry, we jumped around on that budget stuff, and what we think should maybe be, we know some stuff has to be reevaluated, but what everybody else's opinion is on some of the stuff that's in there that should stay or shouldn't stay?
Yeah, I guess, really, I would open that up to, for, for discussion on that building. Because, truthfully, I did not highlight very many things on that. I highlighted the epoxy floor in the shelter house.
I did as well.
That's been something that's not, nice but not, but not-
We don't have much to cut until we get, where the braces are.
Well, it's on the electric, just right now, that would just affect the electric utility and, and water, then. Thank you.
Yeah. So, this would be good to go, then, for the most part?
Yeah, we'd be dealing, we'd be dealing, pulling an additional single-phase line in and adding a transformer to feed that. What we'd do is take out, there's, there's a three-phase transformer running the Lakewood, the old Lakewood ballroom. And I was talking with Jared about taking that out, setting a three-phase sectional cabinet there, so we could pull off of that, and then put a single-phase transformer beside that to feed Lakewood, the Lakewood building.
Okay.
Or go to the end and try to feed them all off of one, or, you know, how do I do it?
So, how, sorry, Scott, go ahead.
Again, I just throw this, I guess, out there for, for countable discussion on any items that, that you'd like to have that discussion, because we can, we can walk through these line items if you like.
Did you have that one over there? I, well, I highlighted the basket truck set aside, the epoxy floor in the shelter house, the wastewater demolition set aside, but that I've also put in there, I would like to increase it for that Omni Beacons thing and the manhole repair. I don't want to go through what SAC went through, and I think that beacon thing is going to save us money down the road. Let's start with the ones that are a little further away from town. That's what I did. Some of the stuff, I don't think we can get away from. I don't think we can get away from the highway school water main loop. I think we need to do that, so we know where we're at with the pressure system. I don't think we can get away from, in the streets, that north half of Lake Shore Drive, the asphalt street project, wherever that may be at. Intake replacement, we've got some of them need to be done. There's some other ones here. I think the utility trailer thing for the campground needs to be done.
What was that cost on that beacon thing?
Five thousand for two, so it's twenty-five hundred a piece.
Well, and then you got-
I had increased that, we talked about it at the last meeting.
Right, you increased just to eight of them, to eight thousand.
To eight, eight thousand, I don't know that that buys eight of them, so-
Where's that, that's not on the sheet?
That's under sewer.
Under, yeah.
I had five thousand on my sheet.
Well, he's got five thousand in one spot, and then he's got eight thousand, and then another.
Yeah, next. Pages of twenty-seven.
Or, Omni Beacon, five thousand.
So, when you, when you look at these pages, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, those-
Will, will eight of them do around the lake, that Omni Beacons? How many you got going around the lake?
So, there's one-
You're six to-
You're six to the outlet. Yeah. Six, and the, and the landing has one on it already, a different style. And then, over there by-
Jumped like Jan last time.
Yeah. Eight, then the eighth one will do over there by the big Pepsi bottle.
Yeah, Donnie Durs.
Donnie Durs, yeah.
That'll be eight.
So, I mean, if we can get by with eight of them this year, you know, I, I'm looking at your time going around the lake, and it's going to save us money in the long run.
In the long run.
Or give them time to do full weeds. Something else, I mean, they can dedicate their time to something else.
Well, yeah, they can commit to something else.
Some of the numbers in the budget now will show eight thousand.
That's on this page?
Two more over there.
But is, what, what's the rest you guys think about that?
I, I agree. I, I agree, Scott.
Okay.
I, I just didn't hear it.
Eight thousand, I do how many?
Three, four.
They're naming up, I mean, it's just...
So if I do four, I mean, six thousand, you can call four.
Right.
We would need eight to do eight.
Sixteen thousand to do eight.
Right, and so, so again, if we take the twenty thousand from the demolition, we can put ten of that towards that. Eleven of it towards that, it's not saving money.
Right.
We're saving money in a different way. Does that make sense to everybody else? I'm all for that.
Where are they at for donations for this community center?
They're right at, uh, hundred eighty-one thousand on the, on the donations.
Well, this TIF money, we're three hundred and forty-four dollars short. Is it something that's gonna happen this year?
It's, by, I guess remembering that this is seventeen months down the road when, when this budget is still in place.
So it could be next spring.
Oh, yeah.
Or next June. And how, do we know how close we're coming with the new numbers there?
I don't have a timeline on it.
I just didn't know, I haven't heard of them.
Yeah.
Is there, yeah, is nothing new reported? So then, that lift station at Kettering, that's forty thousand. That needs to be probably updated, right?
Correct.
I have a question. Um, are they still doing the harvesting on the lake, like?
This is from the, the chemical around the docks.
Okay, well then how about the harvest operations that you have budgeted for four thousand dollars in the, um, parks wages page?
That, uh, there's four thousand dollars that, that's included in there for, for not knowing exactly what the, uh, what the harvester situation might be for the...
And last year, what did we pay?
Zero. Now, um... So, e- even as we look at hiring harvester operators, you know, I'm not sure that we're gonna go hire a slew of operators. You know, I talked to Bill Farley and, and told him we may not look at hiring folks. But, Bill, are you still interested in working for us? Yes, you know, and, and that we'd be able to come up with some operators when needed. I'd, I'd, I'd hate to say that we'd never operate it, because if, if it's needed, we would, we would operate it, I'm sure.
Aren't they gonna dredge out for the worst problem with the east facing? Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yep, that's the, that's the goal.
So also in this here, Scott, this, I'm just looking at the fire department, you got rescue, we have rescue equipment in here. But that comes, doesn't that come out of our fire department budget?
I think that, well, it comes out of, that's, that's incorporated into your general budget of the city.
Right, okay.
It's, it's not in the special one?
The other thing... Have we got a price on trading in the mower? Or is that just a rough idea?
No, it, uh, we, that is, that's what it was by last year. So it's based off the last year.
Do we, uh, so when we get, you know, we talked about the asphalt streets somewhere, you said that, that was like, you got seventy thousand here. We'll know what the cost of that's gonna be when we closer see how much we can really do to spend seventy, is that what your plan is?
Yes. The costs are, cost estimate from Black, from Black Top Certains, the company that we build. And then it's just figuring square, uh, square foot cost of, of these streets.
Okay, so, and is there, is that a, so, you got seventy-eight thousand down here for asphalt streets six and seven?
Yeah, so basically you think of sixth and seventh from high to Ash.
To Asher to Jackson?
Well, this is by your house, right?
It's by, it's by, mine, I don't know, it's a, to Jackson, you're right. It only goes to Jackson.
'Cause Asher was already done, wasn't it?
Um, we redid Ash, but God, it's been fifteen years ago. And then it been...
So this is Scott's report?
There you go.
Well, I don't know the street names like you do.
Past my house, yeah.
Tell me where somebody lives.
So, yes, here's what, what I'm hearing. I'll, I'll give you a, a budget next time that, that shows updated, uh, numbers for, for all of these electric projects, okay? Removes the basket truck set aside, uh, removes epoxy floor in the shelter house.
Wastewater treatment just trains over to Beacon?
Add, add the sixteen thousand to the, to the beacon. Would you, uh...
What about a street sweeper?
I think, like, tomorrow.
Still, I guess, uh, it proposed that it would still be there. We'd transfer that.
Isn't that something we're kind of tentatively looking to pull? That's got some money in the savings account now, right?
It does, yeah.
And if we, if Dean found one that was suitable, that you and Peanut might look at, that you guys thought was be a good one, then we could do it. Right?
We pulled the trigger on that.
Hey, that's all I'm...
'Cause, uh, again, I mean, it's gonna cost us money upfront, but in the long run, it's gonna save us money. So you don't have, I mean, in the fall of the year, you don't have two guys sitting there. I mean, it's gonna save us some labor on that end of it. Not the cost of streets, which by no means, but...
Well, plus the beacons we put in those.
Well, I agree, yeah, yeah.
Um, so, yeah, showing this, uh, wastewater treatment plant demolition fund set aside. Is that twenty thousand right now, but half of that, ten thousand, is from sales tax. Would you still like the ten thousand dollars from sales tax to go?
Oh, to go into the beacon?
Okay. Sewer from slash laws, we'll make that change.
Yeah, so, um, is our plan for Camp Crescent Drains then, that fifty, is that gonna go to the north? Is that what that fifty's for?
Yes. I mean, they're just as a, um, as a project, no, no project defined there yet at all.
Right, yeah, well. All right.
You all right?
You want a straight report?
Just, uh, just that, like we talked about this Thursday, Sack County League, Shane will host, but it's, it's gonna be hosted out at the dock. Um, Sack County League Social Times at six-thirty. For those who can attend, it would be very good to attend, 'cause they're gonna talk about this housing, uh, this housing.
I'll be there.
Yeah, I'll be there.
I will not.
Everybody that's important will be there.
Okay.
So, one last little thing.
Settle.
Do we think we need to have, what we're fingering up for the streets and for the new developments? Do, and what we're gonna participate in, or what's your thought? Do we need to have a plan later for that, 'cause I'm sure they're gonna ask us. I think you should know. We've got to have some hard numbers, I, I would think. And I guess I'm not sure we're, we've got that hard number. We've got an idea how we're gonna get there, but...
That seems, it seems like that hard number is more driven by the property tax generation side of things than by the cost that, that we would look at basically participating up to such a, so many years' worth of property taxes.
Based on the street spec and other limitations that we're going to put into it, when I say that, you know...
So it should be our first round negotiations with that, to find out what the, what their thoughts on that is.
Yeah, I would say that's a starting point with them, and it might move forward further, or it might go backwards further. Makes sense?
Yeah, as long as we have a calculated idea of what we wanna do with them, give the reason why we come up with this plan.
Right.
You know, that's...
And tell them, we're still working with other, we're working with the county to participate in a program. You know, this is where we're at today, does this seem feasible to you? I think like we talked in the committee, I think it was a committee meeting, you know, we're all in. We wanna see it happen, but this is all we can do. Can't, we can't throw good money after bad, you know, so, but we wanna make it happen. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but, are we talking twenty here, Dale, or what, what's our number?
I think, isn't that what we talked about, twenty here?
Yeah, 'cause we always pay that off early, I mean...
Is it fifteen if they agree to the TIF?
It would potentially be fifteen on, on a TIF, but we had talked about, um, you know, just looking at the, the city property tax payback and it... We had options on twenty eighteen and fifteen, just that twenty would be the further stuff that we would go.
Just wanted to remind you of that, is it? All right.
What's the last, the administrative report?
Uh, just that, then Lakeview also hosts Northwest Iowa League, and that's the seventeenth. And then, and again, that's out at, uh, out at the docket.
It's gonna be closed then, isn't it?
They're, yeah, they're opening special for us.
Okay.
We said we were getting a big enough group to come that they would open special for us. So, um...
Most of June, June?
No, 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 no.
I have a couple things I wanna bring up during the administrative report. During our bargaining, negotiations, whatnot have you, I felt pretty, uh, how do I say this the right way? Lack of informed. When we go to start bargaining, we don't have the proper information provided to us. Specifically when we got to the health insurance. And I wanna make it noted that Scott didn't provide that to us. Everybody was here, everybody knows what I'm talking about.
So, I mean, you, you certainly knew that the rates went up three point eight percent.
I did, you didn't present it to the union.
To the union.
And then they, that end, you heard him.
Oh, sure.
That ended our negotiations whatsoever. That made us look like idiots.
Yeah, he pretty much...
He shut it down.
Real quick once I brought that up.
And, you know, Scott, that's, we as a council rely on you to give us the information, and you didn't give that to us. And you can say what you wanna say about when I'm asking you, are you negotiating for you, for the city, or are you negotiating for them, the workers? Because you're in that ballgame, and that's, that's, any way you look at it, that's the way it is. And you didn't provide that information to us, and I wanna make it on record and documented that you didn't give that to us. I'm just making that point. The other thing too, we might have, uh, made a mistake in, one thing got overlooked, but we can't do nothing about that, so... That's not a big deal. And one of the languages that we agreed to, that we talked about not agreeing to, but we did agree to. And I look back at, god damn, we missed that part, but I wanna make it noted about that, not having that information. 'Cause I didn't appreciate it, 'cause I gotta look straight at me.
Most June, June?
So, second?
Second. In June.
Do we get overtime now?